Board meeting of the Northfield Public Schools. It is Monday, December 10th. Dr. Richardson, there were a couple items in the table file.
Yes, we have several items. First, there's an update, excuse me, an updated version of the school improvement plan report from Greenville Park for you to take a look at tonight. We also have the school improvement plan report from the ALC. Also, there's some information in terms of a handout on the initial thoughts of the school calendar for 2013, 14, and beyond. And also, there's a PowerPoint presentation on the 7th grade Eagle Bluff trip for 2013, 14. Beyond that, we also have personnel items in terms of appointments, and also increase, decrease, and change in assignment.
All right. Well, if there are no objection, we will add these to the agenda as we move forward. All right. We are ready to move on to public comment. It's a little different tonight. We will have our normal public comment at this moment. There is another opportunity, if you are coming to address the board in terms of the truth in taxation hearing, we will have another opportunity later in the board meeting, but that will be only confined to discussing the truth in taxation report. So this is an opportunity for members of the community to address the board. If you are here to do so, you're requested to do so from the podium and state your name and address and your reason for addressing the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board for non-taxation? Yes? Okay.
Good evening. I'm Katrina Meehan, and I live at 715 Ford Street East. I'm here to represent the following teachers at Northfield Middle School. Earl Wyman, Jan Andrew, Rose Terniclip, Lisa Hubden, Amy Allen, Craig Crew, Chris O'Neil, and Kathy Penny. I would like to speak to the agenda item tonight that concerns the 7th grade Eagle Bluff trip. We teachers are in favor of continuing the trip on school days as part of our curriculum. We believe a fall trip is a great time for 7th graders to work together, to build community with each other, and with their teachers. We are concerned that changing the trip to non-school days would most likely mean fewer students and fewer teachers of 7th graders would be able to attend. If you have questions about the trip, please contact one of the teachers' names. Thank you.
Could you repeat the names of the teachers? Sorry.
Sure. Earl Wyman, Jan Andrew, Rose Terniclip, Lisa Hubden, Amy Allen, Craig Crew, Chris O'Neil, and Kathy Penny.
Thank you. Thanks. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? No? All right. We are ready to move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packets the minutes from the last school board meeting on November 26th. Is there someone who would like to make a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Jeff.
Second.
Seconded by Carrie. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes as written, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. Announcement and recognition.
Yeah, we have several this evening. First of all, Abby Swanson's 5th grade class at Greenville Park set a goal to collect new and used toys for the Northfield Community Action Center. They set the goal because of Greenville Park's mantra for success, which is set a goal, persevere, and succeed. The goal was also part of their character education program. The character trait for November at Greenville Park was cooperation, and their trait is cooperation, doing more together than you can do on your own. So in collaboration with the rest of Greenville Park's geckos, Ms. Swanson's 5th grade classroom coordinated and collected 358 new and used toys at an estimated amount of $5,000. They've delivered those toys to the Northfield Community Action Center last Friday. Also, Greenville Park students and staff collected 205 pounds of food for the food shelf. So way to go, geckos. We'd also like to announce at this time that on Thursday, the 13th of December, the Torch Program will be featured on NPR program All Things Considered. We don't have the exact time yet, but we know that it's supposed to be aired during the 3 o'clock hour and again during the 5 o'clock hour. So you have an opportunity to tune in there and hear more about our Torch Program here in Northfield. After sometimes being really gritty about the state, I do have to announce today that we had some good news from the state this last week because of the fact that there's been a significant improvement in the state's budget outlook for 2012, 13. They basically are going to be able to reduce a significant amount of the school aid shift that we've been facing the last several years. And that shift is going to be changing up from 63, or excuse me, 64.3% up to 82.5% beginning in December because they showed a $1.33 billion improvement in the state's outlook. I need to remind people again that there is no new money here. They are paying back an IOU that they owe the school district and all the school districts across the state. But what it will mean for us is, you remember listening to our auditor last month talking about the fact that we were cash poor and fund balance not rich, but well on. And now what we're going to see with the increase in terms of the state aid amount coming in, we're going to see more cash balance in place as we operate. And that's a good position, and again, keeps us away from having to look at borrowing dollars. So, good news, and at this point, that 82.5% will remain in place through the remainder of the 2012, 13 year regardless of what happens to the budget forecast in February. Now, obviously, that can change again, but cannot go below the 82.5. So that's a good piece of news. I'd also like to welcome, at this time, Erin Mayberry, our district's new Director of Community Services, and she's now in the hot seat at the end and is going to be doing a little presentation as part of the work tonight. Again, we really appreciate having her on board and part of our team. And then finally, I'd like to take an opportunity to congratulate Jeff Cornell on his last board meeting tonight and to thank him for his service, and my best wishes in your future endeavors going forward, Jeff.
Board members, other announcements or recognition? I have one. I just wanted to recognize all of the staff that when we have this inclement weather, I think about the Benjamin Buss and Dr. Richardson and his corps going out at 4:00 in the morning, and then all of the people that plow the lots and the custodial staff that have to keep the buildings clean. You were starting that whole cycle.
So you're going to nudge me if I start to nod off?
Yeah.
But so are you, how they time.
Anyway, I really recognize all of those people that put in all that extra effort so that students can get.
And again, what we always are trying to do there is make sure that we make the best decisions and calls, and by going out and actually driving the roads in the morning before we make that decision, I think we have a better chance of making the right decision every time.
Great. If there are no other announcements, we will move on to our first item for discussion report, which is the truth in taxation presentation. This used to be a separate meeting, but now it is incorporated into our regular school board meeting.
Good evening. Members of the board, Superintendent Richardson. Tonight's truth in taxation discussion will include reviewing our proposed school district 2013 property taxes as well as our current year 2012, 13 budget. And just to start off with a summary of the 2013 property tax levy that had been certified to the county auditor back in September, we were looking at an overall maximum levy authority which was down just over a half million dollars or $572,000, which represents a 3.5% decrease in levy authority. Several reasons drove that. The four primary reasons included a decrease in resident pupils, which regardless of whether they come to our schools or not, if they're residents of the district, they're factored into that formula for referendum dollars. We also had some decreased adjustments that we recognized this year, primarily one from, which was fairly significant, from a drop in inflationary rates back in 2009. It just took quite a while for that to catch up during, because of the levy cycle and the extended levy cycle that we run. We are recognizing a refunding of a long-term debt this year. This isn't the one that we had before you just a few weeks ago. This is actually the one we refunded last year. So next year, when we come before you again, we'll see the benefit of this most currently refunded debt, which will be another decrease in the overall authority. And we also have some other smaller reductions, such as one in community education for school care costs, which are, the levy is directly related to our estimated costs that we will run in that program. For the second year in the row, the district has under-levied or certified a levy less than its authority. This year's under-levy is coming primarily from the capital levy, which our authority is a bit greater than the $750,000. But because we committed to the taxpayers through the referendum process that we would maintain that $750,000, we've reduced the amount of which we've certified under our maximum authority to maintain that $750,000 amount. We have included this year the other post-employment benefit levy, which we did exclude for one year back in 2012, and I'll be talking about that in greater detail in the next few slides. But altogether, what that means is the levy for 2013 is $15.3 million. This is about 1.1% increase over this 2012 levy, or approximately $167,000 greater than this year's levy. So looking at that levy authority versus certification, we reviewed this back in September when we went to certify the levy to the county auditor. In 2012, our overall tax authority was just over $16 million. And what we certified was almost $820,000 less than that authority. And as you recall, what we were trying to do as a district is look for opportunities that we could help mitigate the impact of legislative change on the homestead market value credit that was removed. Essentially, just to recap what that all did, I don't have a specific slide, but it's a fairly important point because now that we've brought that levy back, we're no longer mitigating that effect of that exclusion. So essentially, what that did, that change in law back in 2011, it took approximately $261 million in state-paid credits and shifted them back to the property taxpayers. The initial thinking was that in order to help protect property taxpayers, they would reduce the value of the properties so that they could see that same type of credit. Unfortunately, what that does is it not only shifts all of that burden, that 261 million statewide, which of that 58 million we related just to school districts, not only shifted that from state-aid paid, state-aid paid credits to property taxpayers, but it also shifted the burden from the lower-value properties to the higher-value properties. And that's a fairly significant reality for some of our property taxpayers this year. While our levy revenue is only increasing approximately 1.1%, we no longer have the ability to mitigate that change in law that took place last year, removing that credit exclusion, the homestead market value credit exclusion. So that impact is being felt with this levy going forward for 2013, and it's being felt particularly at a higher burden, if you will, to those higher-priced values. The credit was initially $304, and that was on a $76,000 home. And that credit would phase out all the way up to a $413,000 home. So the higher the value of the home, the less, you know, of that credit that you would get, or the less of the exclusion of your value. And if your property is over the $413,000, you would see that full shift of property taxes, same amount of property taxes, less value to spread it over, and all it is is shifting the burden. So it's, I just wanted to highlight that because it is a reality for some of our taxpayers, certainly. And again, we have no other way to mitigate that going forward this year. And it really does just highlight one more instance in the burden that has been placed on property taxpayers, you know, in lieu of state aid being so flat for so many years and not increasing. As Dr. Richardson pointed out, the recent forecast is very positive. I hope that's a good sign of times to come for the next legislative session. But it will be a wait and see, and I think particularly, I've heard in different instances that this homestead market value credit will be revisited during this next legislative session because of the burden it did shift on property taxpayers. Just wanted to highlight for, highlight that for you, you know, in case you have questions coming up, and so that we can all kind of keep our eyes on the state capital in the next several months to see if that gets reversed or somehow changed with some of the other different financing options that they have on the table. So as we look to 2013, then moving on, the under-levy, as I mentioned, is coming from the capping, the capital levy at the $750,000. So we have nearly $80,000 of levy that we have not certified so that we can maintain that promise to the taxpayers. So as we shift and look at how that property tax levy is utilized throughout the district, those bottom three pieces of the pie here are all considered general fund revenue. However, this 42.5%, the general fund referendum, is really the resource that we can use for programs, that we can use for instructional purposes, general operations of the district. These other two general fund, kind of orange pieces of the pie there, are really for capital. The capital levy, that 5% represents the $750,000. It's usually drawn on by both our technology operations and our facilities, buildings, and grounds operations. The general, other general fund, 14%, is really made up of that OPED levy, now that we brought back the other post-employment benefits, and some miscellaneous health and safety, other capital type that have restrictions on how it's used, not necessarily available to be used in the classroom. Those top two pieces of the pie, the large one, 36%, is our, comes to the district for debt service, and that is that area where we continue to watch that outstanding debt, looking for lower interest rates so we can capture those savings. And community service makes up the smallest piece of the pie there at the 2.5%. Just another way to kind of look at that on a side-by-side comparison, I have this top grid here shows the three major funds, the general fund, community service fund, and the debt service fund. So you can see our, in this first column, the pay 2012 certified levy, which we are currently utilizing for the 12, 13 budget year alongside the proposed 2013 levy that we'll be using for the 2013, 14 school year, and how those different areas have adjusted. Again, the general debt service here down in that third row, we're seeing that savings from the refunding, some cost savings in our after-school childcare and the community ed. And then we have a few things going on in the general fund here. We have the addition of that OPED levy that I discussed, but we also have those adjustments that is bringing that down, so that they're kind of netting together. On the bottom here, this just really shows the voter-approved portion of our levy compared to the other components of the levy. You can see the vast majority of our levy of the total 15.3% is voter-approved, so each and every time that we've levied that, we have gotten voter approval prior. So moving on to, from the 2013 proposed levy to discuss the 12, 13 general fund budget as it is adjusted now, this is really the framework as we begin to look forward to our projections of the 2013, 14 budget year. So we begin with our 2013 general fund budget, and then we start kind of bringing in what's known. This levy component that we're talking about tonight will be factored into the budget as we roll it forward, bringing projections in the next several weeks. But we have looked at the 2013 budget, and some of the key factors that are notable for adjusting from preliminary to final include just better, more updated information based on our audited financial data from fiscal year 2011, 12. That was before you just last month. We also have a better idea of the October 1 enrollments. We're past October 1, so they're no longer a guess, they're no longer a projection. We use those as the basis for looking at, projecting our ADMs, which are actually the driver for our formula revenue. We also have finalization of all of our labor and employment contract assumptions, so we can again remove some of those assumptions, populate the budget with the actual reality of where those all landed. And we have updated federal revenues and expenditures. That is an area we did very little with in the preliminary budget because there was so much unknown at that time and what would happen with our federal programs. So we really kind of left that untouched until now at this point in time, we know more where we're at. So we were able to update those numbers. So starting with the October 1 student counts, we, you know, these are the last five years. These are student counts that we use to predict ADMs. So if we, we can't necessarily compare these exactly to the seat count in the building. The middle school is one good example. We have several students that come home from St. Dominic's. They generate for a few different classes, elective-type classes, they generate shared time revenue, not necessarily formula revenue. So those middle school numbers are a little different than what we bring to you on a monthly basis, prepared out of our MARS system, just to, in case you're comparing numbers and are wondering why there's a difference there. But you can see 9, 10, and 10, 11, we were on that slight decline. It's been very, very stable, but we were slowly declining. So as we project out into the future, it kind of moves that slope in a downward motion and, you know, it kind of projects a more negative outlook on our revenues. The last two years have been positive, again, very slight, but moving in the right direction out of the red, and we are seeing some slight upticks in our enrollments, which helps our projections for our revenue. And just looking at how the budget has adjusted based on those factors, those key factors that I had mentioned, our revenue, we're bringing forward a revenue which shows a decrease of $336,000. And again, the primary source of that decrease is federal dollars. We also have a decrease in federal expenditures, you know, it's really kind of a reimbursable type program. But what that is offset against are new and more current information on our labor and employment contracts. So we really kind of factor all of those pieces in, a lot of moving pieces, and that's what we get to a net in our, with a decrease in both revenues and expenditures for the general fund. And just to look at the fund summary, as we do each time, whether it's preliminary budget projections, final budget, I always like to just lay it down side-by-side. We have our 11, 12 in the first column of our actual audited financial information, and where we were in our preliminary planning process, what we originally planned and approved back in June, and then how that is adjusted with the decreases in both the annual revenue and annual expenditure. Not a great deal of difference from where we were preliminarily, but just to lay those out side-by-side so you can see how that shifts and adjusts our fund balance. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Board members, questions for Stephanie? I really appreciate that you explained again the 2011 legislative action and how we're still trying to figure our way out of that one. Anyone else?
Stephanie, if you could, just to clarify one thing, I know that there was an article in the Northfield News last week talking about the impact of the refinancing of the bonds from our previous bond issue. Can you talk, again, just very briefly, about how, you know, how that refunding will affect us as a district and how it will affect our taxpayers?
Sure. The overall refunding of the two issues that we had before the board at our last meeting netted an overall savings of $1.1 million, just over $1.1 million. What that does is it decreases our annual principal and interest payments on that debt just like it would your home if you refinanced your home. And so while we won't see that full $1.1 million in savings in one year, we will see that over the next several years. So as an example, when I toggle back here to look at this top grid, how it breaks down between our general fund, our community service fund, and our debt service fund, if we look at that third line there, we can see that debt service levy going down, and in this particular year, it had gone down $145,000. That is a direct result of the refunding we did last year. Next year, we should see, I think it was in, it's right in this ballpark, I want to say it may be $138,000, somewhere in a little bit lower. And we will see that, you know, drop and stay down for the next, I believe it's 12 years that we have to pay off that debt. So by the time we've paid it all off, we will have saved our taxpayers $1.1 million from what was originally approved. Does that sound?
Yeah, and so again, this is not new money that the district has the availability to spend, it's simply a reduction in the amount of general debt service levy that we can levy because the cost of the bonds, principal and interest is going down. So the only beneficiary of this is, are the taxpayers of the community.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, board members, if you don't have any other questions for Stephanie, we want to also take an opportunity, if there's anyone here from the community that wanted to speak in relation to the truth in taxation report, this is an opportunity for public comment on truth in taxation. No? All right. We are going to move on to our next item. Then we have two school improvement plans, Greenville Park and Area Learning Center. Who's flip to go first? Rock, paper, scissors? The board members, you have PowerPoints and a new continuous improvement plan.
Ready to go? You ready to go?
Ready.
All right. Thank you for giving us the opportunity again to come back and talk about the good things going on at Greenville Park. It's always encouraging to me to come back every year, to report on how hard our students work and our families work and staff and faculty work at Greenville Park. If you notice behind me, I've brought some friends and colleagues from Greenville Park who are going to help us in our presentation today. Can I just introduce them real quick, Dr. Richardson? Is that okay?
Okay. From your left to right, we've got Heather Riden, our guest special, Mary McGovern, Title Wong, and our guest specialist Diane Portman. We've also got two of my apparent advisors here, Laura Verdo and Mary Swanson, they're going to help with the presentation for tonight. Okay? Okay, so without further ado, what I'd like to do is just talk a little bit about the Greenville Park Site Staff Development Site Council. It's a shared decision-making body, site-based management. We work in the school improvement process together as a team. The members are on this page right here. I won't read through all of these. You've got the documents in front of you, and I know you've had a chance to read those, so I won't dwell on those. Our Greenville Park Building Vision Statement, we present to you every year, and it hasn't changed. We believe that the most promising strategy for achieving, the mission of Greenville Park is to develop our capacity to function as a professional learning community, which is a good thing because it's a major initiative in the district. I know we've been working on it very hard for five years, and you've seen some of the good work there and videotapes, and we'll present again in February for our PLC presentation as well. Our Greenville Park values are also posted in our media center in two signs. We believe very strongly- see this four-step process, or circular process, and it's pretty much the same, but it's the 55,000-foot look per the school improvement plan process that you have in front of you. The reading objective for our reading improvement is to accelerate literacy growth, as you see in the slip that you have in front of you. Our evidence of need is that we've got an overall decrease at this point in proficiency on our reading test last spring, from the spring before. In 2011, the spring of 2011, we had 78.3% proficiency. Spring in 2012, we went to 75 and 9/100 proficiency. Our reading goals this year are a little bit different because of the MMR, and how the MMR is a little bit different. And we've got some growth goals, proficiency goals, and a gap goal. In those areas for growth and gap, we had some great success last year, we became a celebration school primarily because we narrowed the gap in achievement between our highest performing subgroup and our lowest performing subgroup. And we've got a growth goal, where we performed rather well as well last year, we had high levels of growth, particularly due to math, and you'll see that later on, Heather will be presenting on that. A professional plan for carrying out our school improvement plan is essentially the RTI and PLC implementation, as I dovetail together to help students and staff meet students' instructional needs at their instructional level. And so I want to just draw your attention to the bottom right-hand corner of the screen right here. If you look at the table file that Anita gave you for the Greenville Park, the current Greenville Park plan, if you go to this page in the Greenville Park School Improvement Plan, each time I go to a slide, you'll find this information, so I tried to make it a little bit more user-friendly for you this year. So the table file school improvement plan is the one I'm referring to here. And once again, if you just kind of draw your attention to this bottom right-hand corner, it's going to bounce a little bit, and it'll land on a page, and if you go there, you'll find the data, so that you can follow along in both the PowerPoint and the school improvement plan. Okay? So our site improvement objective for reading is to accelerate the literacy growth of students performing below grade level, as measured by our site DIBL fluency probes, DRA, and then a number of other assessments that we're all familiar with. And we use that data to inform our instruction on a benchmark basis, three times a year, fall, winter, spring, but also on a shorter interval basis with respect to progress monitoring, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. Okay? In 2011, 12, this is a kind of review of how we did over the past year, beginning this year. In 2011, we had two goals. You've already seen that we had a decrease from 78.3% to 75 and 9/100. We also had a goal to increase our free and reduced lunch subgroup from 61.5% proficiency to 74. And what actually happened was it went from 61.5 to 53.37, so we lost a little ground in our reading achievement goals in our purple and in our larger student population. Our evidence of need then is some things we've already stated here, we've had a proficiency, oops, back to that one. I'll try that again. There we go. My thumb must have gotten bigger. Evidence of need is, has already been stated here, and already been stated here, and there's also, if we look at the MMR as a new measuring stick from the state of Minnesota, we looked at our gap, and so we wanted to look at what the evidence of need is in terms of a gap of achievement, our higher performing subgroup versus our lowest performing subgroup. And what we found was that between our white not Hispanic population subgroup had an 84%, approximately 85% proficiency on the spring 2012 test, and our free and reduced population subgroup had a 54% proficiency, and so there was a large gap there, and that's an evidence of need at Greenville Park. There's some good news in terms of an evidence of need. In the spring of 2012, when we look at, oh, that's doing that to me, but, in the spring of 2012, we had 11% approximately of our fourth grade students who were previously non-proficient who became proficient in fourth grade. One of the reasons why this is a significant piece here, and that you're only seeing fourth grade, is that our third graders didn't have a test the year before to do a comparison, not in our fifth graders, now in sixth grades. So the only cohort we have with a previous test and then a current test would be fourth grade. And so that's an evidence of need there, and that's, we're going to talk a little bit about how we're going to increase that this year with our fifth grade, as that fourth grade cohort moves forward. And then interestingly, in the fall of 2012, when we did our progress monitoring, our benchmarking probes, fluency, 61% of our student population met the benchmark for proficiency and fluency. And as a reminder, there's a very high correlation between reaching the benchmark fluency and being proficient in comprehension, and so we've got some need there in terms of 61% of our students. And from this point forward, we're going to have Heather, not Heather, we're going to have Diane and Mary report out on the rest of the reading.
Mary and I are tag teaming on the reading.
Thank you, good evening. If you take a look at the first proficiency goal, increasing our percentage of proficiency for children in grades three through five, just a little comment on that. Historically, Greenville Park has been in the 80% proficiency range, which is, even with our higher second language population and our higher free and reduced lunch population. And we'll share our plan to accomplish that goal further on in our presentation.
And then our second proficiency goal is we will increase the percentage of students who meet the median on the MAP in grades one through three in reading from 54% in the fall, this past fall, to 75% in this coming spring, as measured by the MAP test. And that's also, we really feel good about our growth, our plan for targeting the children, especially read well by third grade. We are excited about what we have in place for them.
We've also set a gap goal. We will reduce the gap in achievement between our white, not of Hispanic origin students and our free and reduced lunch subgroup from 30.7 percentage points in the spring of 2012 to 25.7 percentage points in, percent proficient in the spring of 2013. Statewide, as you know, there is a gap between the white, not of Hispanic origin students and the free and reduced lunch students, and our goal is to decrease that gap in 2013.
Okay, and then for our growth goal, this is the one that refers or connects with what Dave was alluding to with our previous success with our fourth, fourth grade cohort. We have a goal for 16 and 1/10th percent of our fifth grade students, which was our fourth grade cohort, who were previously not proficient in the spring of 12, 2012, to show growth and become proficient this coming spring on the MCA3 reading assessment.
We've also set another growth goal in terms of fluency. We will increase the percentage of all students in grades three through five who met benchmark in oral reading fluency, and you can see the percentage numbers there. One thing we do at Greenville, we stress with students that reading is thinking, and we, as we know, fluency drives comprehension, so when a child can read expressively at the phrase level rather than word by word, they're much better able to understand what they're reading. Historically, our fluency scores are a little bit lower in the fall, and with nine months of, of good teaching, rise up again in the spring, so.
And the next, the new thing that we have in place at Greenville, I guess we also have it in place at Sibley School this year, is the Minnesota Reading Corps. And that has been a big part of what I've done this year, and it's been very exciting. So under the supervision of myself as the internal coach for reading, AmeriCorps reading tutors, and we have two reading tutors, they identify at-risk students based on oral reading fluency. And they also, AmeriCorps reading tutors implement standard protocol intervention, starting with students who are identified as emerging. So what we do is we have our students that we, we assess the students that we think are of need, and they have a benchmark assessment, and this AmeriCorps goes through the AMES web, the school district uses DIBL, so we had to assess children based on a different tool than what the district was using. But we identify children just below proficiency, and each tutor takes on roughly 16 students. And then currently, we have our two tutors working with 16 students every day, one-on-one, for 20 minutes, and they do a standard protocol intervention. We progress monitor weekly with them, and we look at the data, we have them. I'm the internal coach, there's a master coach that comes down monthly, we also analyze data, and we make program changes accordingly. And they've actually exited 10 children already. So they're currently with 32, and because they took the bubble group of children, the kids right below proficiency, they've, children get in, and they have this intensive instruction or intensive intervention, and we look at data, and we make changes accordingly.
We also have Title I support at Greenville Park. Title I teachers take the students that are below, less proficient than the AmeriCorps students. Currently, we have two part-time and one full-time title teachers at Greenville, and we use a variety of measures to determine who is eligible for our services. Forty-three students currently are being, being progress monitored in Title I, so we have a nice group of students that we, we bring into our doors. Our goal has always been to help children become independent grade-level readers and writers in the classroom. We like to also exit students as time goes on. We do this practicing, we do this by practicing reading and writing strategies, such as what can you do when you're stuck on a word? How can you figure it out? What are some strategies that you can use? We read many books at the child's level to practice fluency and also comprehensive strategies. We incorporate writing into our Title I lessons, as we believe that reading and writing are reciprocal operations. And when you think of it, when reading, a child looks at a letter, has to produce the sound, and in writing, you hear the sound and have to produce the letter, so they're very reciprocal back and forth. And when a child can orchestrate both the reading and writing together, it really can help a below-grade level reader become independent in the classroom. There are many wonderful RTI interventions that can help practice the skills that a child needs, and those are our, our progress monitored bi-weekly with our, in Title I. And so ideally, then, these skills will be used to gradually, so that a student will gradually be able to read more difficult texts and up to grade level.
And now we're, there's a slide that has to do with flex grouping, and we strongly believe in our flex grouping time, and this is where, outside of the core curriculum or the core reading instruction, the, the classrooms, especially the second through fifth grade, they flex and have ability groups, they adjust those groups as necessary, and they work hard in their PLCs to make these flex groups, and they look at data to assess who should be in each group and monitor that all year. But the flex group is outside of the core curriculum, it's ability grouped, oh, it's reading and math, so they do meet four days a week, and they, half the time is reading and half the time is math.
This year, we're really thankful to have an increase in our ESL staff, common prep times with classroom teachers, and really aid in planning and support. The ESL teachers work in the areas of reading and math, both as a push-in to the classroom and as a pull-out to focus small groups more deeply on certain lessons. We really believe that our additional ESL support will help close the gap between our ESL students and our population at large.
This slide talks a little bit about the various assessments that we have. We have formative assessments monitored by grade-level PLCs, and that's the, during the unit of study, we have checks that tell us if the instruction is meeting the children's needs, if they're, it allows the teacher to monitor and adjust. The summative assessment comes at the end of a unit of study, it's for grading purposes, and it's what does lead us most commonly to the grades, but it's at the end of the unit, where formative is during the unit of study. The universal screening, we've talked about before, our school district uses DIBLs as our universal screening, and that's the dynamic indicators of basic early literacy skills is what the DIBL stands for. This is our benchmarking three times a year. It's a quick check to see if the students are proficient at a particular task, particularly fluency. And progress monitoring for at-risk students is probably what I'm most excited about this year. We currently at Greenville have 220 children that are getting progress monitored, and it's not just by the classroom teachers, it's by a number of support staff, from special ed to Title I to our AmeriCorps members, to some classroom teachers, our Read 180 teacher, our ESL or EL teachers as well. But our progress monitoring is done bi-weekly, and in AmeriCorps, they progress monitor weekly. But it just basically tells us that if it's working, if the children are learning as they go, and that's what we use to, we look at the data from, we look at the data from everything, but the progress monitoring is, someone said it was like the, the universal screening is more like a picture, where progress monitoring is like the video. You can see if it's making progress during the year, so you don't wait too long before you jump in and make a change.
The act of, excuse me, the act of learning to read really is rocket science, you know, especially for, for children who struggle with reading. And so we have another assessment that we can use with struggling readers. When a child is an independent grade-level reader, he or she is orchestrating what we call all the three cueing systems in reading, and they're listed there, number one, two, and three. Does the word that I just read make sense? It doesn't fit the picture, it doesn't fit the meaning of the story, can we say it that way in English? I have a lot of students that will say rand or rung for the word ran, can't really say it, say it that way in English. And also, does the word look right? And that, children have to measure all those three things together as they read. Fluent readers can do this on the run, and proficient readers really hardly have to stop and think about it at all. So the assessment that gives us information about a reader, especially in the primary grades, is called the developmental reading assessment, or the DRA. And this assessment, it's, it's not quite as quick as the one-minute checks, but it really gives us a, a wealth of knowledge about each reader. The child reads a standardized leveled text, and the teacher does what's called a running record, which is kind of a shorthand form of note-taking. And that, and through that running record, a teacher can determine the child's reading behaviors, what strategies they're doing, using a difficulty, what are those three cueing systems are they using, or what are they ignoring? And so we, we can learn that by the DRA. The comprehension is measured by a child's retell of the story and scored in comparison to a rubric. There are standardized, standardized guidelines that, that are established to help determine a child's independence and also his instructional reading level. This is a really helpful tool for children who are reading below grade level, and it also helps the child know, know his or her reading level and able to pick, just write books for her, their independent level to, to take home for their book in the bag, and also during their independent reading time in the classroom. Growth is noted on our, on our Greenville Park data sheet that we will show in just a moment.
The next few slides show various things we have in place to meet these goals and match children where they're at and accelerate their growth. And the first one is talking about our Read 180. We're excited to have a Read 180 teacher beyond what we have in the classroom. We have a, we, in the past few years, we had the Read 180 teacher be one of the classroom teachers, and then the other children were moved accordingly, just so that teacher could house the Read 180 children themselves. But we have Emily Lund on board this year as our Read 180 teacher. And this is for fourth and fifth graders. They, grade-level teachers as well as that teacher identify the children at risk based on the various assessments here, and they do place children in that program for the year. They monitor it as well, make changes. The next one is, we want to increase our reading engagement by opening our library and having it open and accessible to children all day, so they can find just right books at a time that matches what works for them and their classroom teacher. The third one down is, we really want to increase the reading engagement. We have a common reading log throughout the school, and we have a common form, and it's consistent year-to-year, which we believe is very helpful for families and parents, so they know what's coming and they continue to read it outside of school. We also want to recognize our children, especially our at-risk children, for completing their reading log, so during our building-wide meetings, our monthly building-wide meetings with the help of the parent liaisons, we recognize these children. We also have a lot of different opportunities in the classroom too, where we recognize and appreciate those children for their reading. This one, we, we believe in the daily sustained reading time, some people just can't get it in, so especially during the winter months, we offer coming in before school that matches what works for them and their classroom teacher. The third one down is we really want to increase the reading engagement. We have a common reading log throughout the school and we have a common form and it's consistent year-to-year, which we believe is very helpful for families and parents so they know what's coming and they continue to read it outside of school. We also want to recognize our children, especially our at-risk children for completing their reading log. So during our building-wide meetings, our monthly building-wide meetings with the help of the parent liaisons, we recognize these children. We also have a lot of different opportunities in the classroom too where we recognize and appreciate those children for their reading. This one, we, we believe in the daily sustained reading time. Some people just can't get it in. So especially during the winter months, we offer coming in before school to our morning recess time, they come into the media center and they read. And children really look forward to this opportunity. The middle one here is talking about job-embedded professional development for all grade teachers in tier one or in our core curriculum. And Heather and I with, as the RTI specialist, really try to help make this happen. We want to make sure that our core curriculum is solid and it's being carried out. So we use our staff development time and our, just different coaching opportunities throughout the day to meet the needs of the teachers. We also started a, a little time after school monthly for our new teachers. We have a number of new teachers this year, so we have new teacher monthly meetings where we can also do some more professional development. That's been exciting for us. At the bottom, we're talking again about the library and the just-write books. We have our media center leveled and it's easier for children and teachers and support staff and volunteers to find books that are just-write for our children. Our nonfiction books are still needing to be leveled, but we're working on that. This slide is talking about our RTI implementation. We're very excited that we have the two full-time RTI coaches where we can go out and have a lot of professional development for ourselves and we can bring it back into the classrooms. We have ongoing, an ongoing process. We have time with our building to develop and be stronger in our RTI team as well as district time. But we feel we are now able to dig deeper into specific skill deficits in our children and truly help teachers and support staff to meet their needs. We keep tabs and have ongoing conversations in order to best meet children where they are at. And we really want to focus our instruction and accelerate that growth in our children. We also, you know, RTI is all about database decision-making and problem-solving and we feel having these full-time coaches in the building all year is really helping us to not only put a program in place but sustain it. And it's been motivating. We also have a lot of data meetings and we make our necessary changes based on what we're seeing in our data. The next one is talking again about our professional development time. We really want to carry out and support the Reader's Workshop model and use what teachers are needing, whatever feedback we have from staff, we want to make changes accordingly. And lastly on the list is, there's a book on RTI with English language learners and that's been exciting. We have a book club with the EL staff and the RTI team and we're digging deeper into what's best for those children. That book has been, we're really getting started with it, but it's really brought some great things to light for us where we feel stronger about our decision-making now. And this is the database team. We have meetings every other week where we review the data. And we also have, that's just the data team itself, the RTI team. And it's our principal and our psychologist and Heather and I have these meetings when we look at data. But then we also bring classroom teachers in possibly, definitely after each benchmarking period, but we, we would also like to get our teachers in, in our PLC groups possibly every six weeks to come in and review their data and see. Between that time, we have conversations with them and we go in on their prep time or their PLC time and we analyze and make, make changes. Now we're going to look at what our data slides look like.
And this is difficult to see, it's quite small, but we're, we're really proud of, all of our eyes, I think. Each classroom fills out a data sheet such as this example and children's test scores are tracked from year to year. It helps us with placement in the next year, the next school year. And also, growth that we see here is just celebrated. We're so excited to be able to have a system like this in place that can actually follow a child's score from, from fall to, to winter to spring. And that kind of growth is really celebrated. So if you take a look at the bowling ball, is it on there?
Yeah.
Okay.
You'll see it again.
Okay. Each column, the columns that are already filled in are for the fall benchmarking, either the oral reading fluency with the DIBELS or the MAP score. And the columns that are left empty are going to be filled in by winter and then again by spring. So as, as this is filled in, in the spring, we have just a wonderful piece of information on each child at Greenville.
Now you see the bowling ball. So this is their, our Excel sheet and each teacher, each classroom teacher has their own document. And so this would be one fifth-grade teacher's. The first slide was their whole class. By the end of the year, that will be completely filled out and it will be what would go, those children's lines, the, the class list itself will, will change, but the information on it will transfer to the next year's teacher. But then the next where the bowling ball is, now you see that this says reading interventions. So what happened was, we had the whole class, we sat down in a data meeting. This year, we asked the teachers, who in your class do you think needs help? Who's already getting services? Those children were marked with one color with the, they were already in a service, they were marked in pink. They were either getting special ed, they were getting Title I, this is for their reading service. And then that was, you'll see on the far left, the red and the blue or pink. And then what the white line is for a child that their fall oral reading fluency, their DIBELS scores showed that they had a need. So we added those children as well. So this is, the class list got brought down to the children in need from that class. So now when we go into our data retreats, we can target, this comes after each benchmarking. We'll, we'll look and see where are we at? Where were we? Where are we currently? And then where are we going? So what this does is tells us exactly which children, what they're getting, who's responsible. So it says the name, which we took off, the tier that they're in, if they're in tier two or three, then the date their service started and these are children were in September. What is their intervention? So the top one, they'll say special ed, then DR stands for, you'll see it later on a different slide, duet reading. That's the particular intervention that child is getting. And it says title, DR again, duet, RRC, S is repeated reading comprehension. And there's a slide that'll explain that in a little bit, but it tells which intervention they're currently getting. And then who's responsible? And in this case, it's special ed, it's Reading Core, it's the Title I staff. And then what is their progress monitoring tool? And in this case, D stands for DIBELS and then oral reading fluency and three is the level, which is what we use. This would be a third-grade classics example. Who is the person? So who would be that contact person, kind of like a case manager on this? And then the growth. And we want to look at that growth and we want to see if there's, if there needs to be a change. The reason that it starts over again is, and I think we brought it out five, five sets because we can make those changes. And we'll say, oh my gosh, we tried duet reading, that didn't work. We need to try something else. Or we thought, you know, that sometimes in AmeriCorps, we add a second intervention. They were starting with our kindergartens with something called phonemic blending. And then we added letter sound. So we can note our changes here. So we have a really good tracking system. I'm trying to think of what else I wanted to say specific about it. I just feel like it targets exactly what we want to hit on later in the year. Oh, the one that's empty, it comes back to the classroom teacher's responsibility, which also is really good news because now the support staff, that's what I was most excited about. You have the special ed, the Title I, the AmeriCorps, and then the classroom teacher is responsible, but not as, they don't have to do that one-on-one intervention every day with very many kids. It's less children. So it's more doable. And they also have the support of Heather and I going in and modeling it, starting and then turning it over eventually to them for carrying it out. But the needs aren't as great when you start sharing responsibility. So that was good. Now we go to our, one of our other, where the bowling ball landed now is our reading menu. And this really is where we start with reading interventions. And the truth is, Minnesota Reading Core does some things really well. And we've learned from them. And we are using some of the things they have. And the funny thing is when we look at other areas and other websites, other school districts, the interventions they have come right back to these are sound, standard protocol interventions. And I've been looking at this data since September with the Master Coach coming out and it's really working. It's very exciting. So this is the list and the, the staff had this, we did an in-service for the staff and right before Thanksgiving. And they have these lists and they know phonemic blending is coded PB, what it is. It's an auditory skill and it, and so on. And you can see this list, but there's I think nine here that are very common, that we use often. And then the next slide, targets where we start. We have some that we think are kindergarten. Yeah, if a child is reading at that level, we might go back. Or if they're new to the country and they're new to English, we might have to go back and do some things with phonemic blending or segmenting or letter sounds. In first grade, we typically start with letter sound correspondence and move into blending words. And then second through fifth grade, Minnesota Reading Core targets kindergarten through third grade, but we feel these, these strategies or these interventions can work as well for other grades. So we said two, second to fifth grade does duet reading, newscaster, repeated reading with comprehension, pencil tap and stop and go. And currently, we're using about nine different interventions in our school with, from this list. And there's others as well. And I think that's the end of the reading. So thank you.
Quickly move on to math. The 55,000-foot level objective is accelerating growth in math as well. We had an overall increase in proficiency in terms of our evidence of need from 59.410% to 70.100% from 2011, 2012. Our math goal is a proficiency goal and our professional plan once again is RTI and PLC implementation for math. And just to kind of review, you've seen already that we had some significant growth. We'll accelerate math growth in students performing below grade level. And we're also looking at helping students who are above grade level as well and performing at their skill set. In 2001, 2012, our math achievement goal and result was that we would like to have seen growth to 80%. Went from 59.410%, however, to 70.100% as you've seen earlier.
All right. Okay, so now on to math and our plans for this year. This year's goal is that we will increase the percent proficiency for grades three through five in math from about 70% last spring to 75% in the spring of 2013 as measured by MCA III math assessment. So some of the strategies that we're going to use to accomplish this. We are so lucky to have, we, Diane talked about how we have two Reading Core members at Greenville Park this year. We also have one Math Core member or tutor at our school this year. And her name is Steph Anderson. She actually is a, a recent graduate. She is a licensed elementary ed teacher. And she works with 22 fourth and fifth grade students every week. And she meets with them for 100 minutes per week. And it is really quality stuff that she's doing with them. She identifies those, identified the students early in the year by looking at their performance on the MCA from the previous spring. And then when she brings those students in to, to work with her during Math Core time, she's really honing in on the areas in which the students struggled on the MCA from last year. So it's really specific strategies that she's working on. Steph is really wonderful and she not only has a passion for math, but she really has great rapport with all of our students. So it's really fabulous to have her there. We also, of course, have our wonderful Title I teachers. They work primarily with reading and Mary gave lots of explanation about how they do that. They also, on a more limited basis, work with some students in, in math as well in those small group settings. Okay, we continue to use formative assessment to evaluate student learning during the learning process as Diane described earlier. And the information that's gleaned from those formative assessments help us to make adjustments in our teaching to make sure that we're meeting student needs. And then of course, we talked about PLCs a little bit earlier too. Each PLC team has both a reading goal and a math goal. So their PLC time is spent on looking at student data and then using that data to develop instructional plans that address student needs. This explanation is exactly the same one that Diane just went through a few minutes ago. But just to reiterate or summarize, our major goals through the RTI implementation are to identify students at risk, to intervene early with standard protocol interventions, and to monitor their progress frequently and then to make adjustments like Diane said as, when students, we notice that something isn't working, we want to make sure that we make changes to make sure that it is working for students. We also are continuing to implement and reflect on progress monitoring for math. Math is a little bit of a different area than reading is in terms of the RTI process. It's just not quite as established. The, the types of resources aren't as many as there are for reading. And so we're still in that process right now. At the district level, all six RTI coaches and our Director of Teaching and Learning, Mary Hansen, are looking at possibilities for appropriate benchmarking and progress monitoring tools for math. We know that we have DIBELS for reading, but we also need to find appropriate tools for math. We also talked about flex grouping already. Again, it's in both areas, split evenly between reading and math. And this is really a great strategy for our teachers to be able to put students into appropriate groups so they can meet them at their instructional level. And again, just to mention, oh, we're talking about trying to add more minutes to math instruction as, as we can at Greenville. Currently, we typically have about 70 minutes focused on core math instruction. And we'd love to see it be, look more like 80 or 90 minutes, but of course, there are no extra minutes in the day. And so that means, that it means constant sort of adjustment throughout the day to try to figure out what might work best at the classroom level. Diane spoke about formative and summative assessments. And again, with universal screening and progress monitoring, that's something that's in process. Right now, what we're using in, because we don't have a tool like DIBELS, we are using for universal screening and benchmarking, we're using the MAP test because it's something that we have and it's a place to start. For progress monitoring, we are developing customized progress monitoring tools specific to the actual intervention that we are implementing. So it's a way to be able to still progress monitor, but in, in the meantime, while we're looking for a, a different, another tool. And then earlier, Diane showed you all of our spreadsheets that we're using with our data team at Greenville Park. And from the classroom level down to the list of students who we need to be more concerned about or need to look at more closely over time and really watch their progress. We have that very same system for math. And we just feel really good about the way we're able to kind of collect our data and look at it thoughtfully and use it to make decisions. And we know every single child by name in our building in both reading and math who will need additional help and who are not right now on track to meet grade-level standards. And then because we know who they are, exactly who they are and who their teachers are and what kind of support is already being provided, that helps us to really be able to target exactly what they need and, and meet their needs as best we can. So we're very excited about that.
And finally, the last piece, we haven't presented on climate for the past few years. We've got a climate goal this year. And again, climate objective is to develop our social culture for success. Our evidence of need is right now, because we haven't had a climate plan in the past, we don't have a baseline, so our goal this year is primarily to collect that baseline data and a number of things. And our climate goals are entirely proficiency goals and our plan is to communicate, increase communication and increase opportunities for students and for families. And the next piece is essentially how we plan to go about doing this. Greenville Park will develop a formal framework for establishing the student-parent and staff social culture needed to achieve academic behavior, behavioral, social, emotional success for students. And we're really good right now at this piece right here. We're looking for the social, emotional piece and we've got significant components that we've added at Greenville Park in the past few years to address that. Our evidence of need is that Greenville Park, Greenville Park does not have a system-wide approach for gathering and using information about families at this point. Greenville Park does not currently have a system for collecting social, emotional and behavioral data so that we know what the needs of our student population and families are. And Greenville Park does a lot actually to engage families and students. And Mary and Laura are here to help us understand that and give you some numbers actually with what we're doing right now in terms of participation. After coming out of AYP world and the No Child Left Behind and so forth, where there's a significant component in the AYP plan for parent involvement, I discovered that Greenville Park does parent Park does parent involvement very, very well. So one of the nice outcomes there. However, we do not have currently a central framework that defines our approach, really, to addressing the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of our students. So what we have are five goals, and I'm just going to quickly go through them, and then I'm going to have Mary and Laura help me talk a little bit about where we're going with our climate goals. For all proficiency goals, we're going to collect baseline data. Essentially, all of these talk about collecting baseline data, okay? And we're going to establish baseline data for all students in terms of decreasing the frequency of bottom lines through positive reinforcement of replacement behaviors, okay? That's a PVIS term. The PVIS is kind of an acronym to the alphabet soup we're in right now. Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, it's also otherwise known as, you'll start to see, SW PVIS, School Wide Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. And we're going to set a goal for increasing our positive reinforcement and increasing replacement behaviors and reducing bottom line referrals. We're going to establish a baseline for all students and decrease, in the subsequent two-year period following 2012-2013 school year, we will set goals for decreasing participation in that area as well. We're going to establish a baseline for communication with our parent community by developing a parent survey. We're going to send that out. We'll establish a baseline with that information. We're going to track each student in the building who participates in student recognition or peer performance leadership at Greenville Park in a variety of venues. This is going to be a major undertaking because we're going to know exactly how many times each student has had the opportunity to either be recognized or perform or demonstrate leadership role in Greenville Park. And that's going to be the work of our parent liaisons, and they're already doing a real nice job of collecting that data. Greenville Park will establish a baseline of annual events that will draw parents into the building in order to provide parents with opportunities to grow as parents as well.
Hi, I'm Mary Swanson. On the parent survey, we're actually going to send out two parent surveys. One on communication. We do a lot to communicate with parents, and so we want to get their feedback on what's actually useful. Maybe we need to keep doing a lot because it's getting everybody that way. The other one is a parent participation survey to find out what's beneficial for them to be in the building or to interact with their kids. And so we're going to look at both of those areas in our surveys. Laura has numbers on so far who has participated in either peer leadership or student recognition. One of the things we'd like to do is we keep track of who's in front of students at building wide meetings, is then to bring those numbers back to classrooms so that we can help teachers know who's missing in the work, respect, and belong piece, especially that belonging piece. And just an example of who we're counting, we are even going so far as Dave has a PowerPoint at each building-wide meeting, and he invites a student to be the clicker who comes up and just pushes the button. And a student is in front of their 500 peers, and so we're even counting that student who gets to be in front of their peers and have that responsibility.
We've had three building-wide meetings so far this year, and we've had 86 students recognized. And next month, we already have three classrooms, whole entire classrooms that will be recognized, the Christmas sharing, a first-grade classroom, and a fourth-grade classroom. And so that will probably be at least 60 more students who will be recognized just in December.
And then with the drawing parents into the building, every time we have an event, we have students sign in along with who comes with them. And so we're keeping track of parents that come into the building and then sorting through who those are. One example is at our, was it the Dance-A-Thon? When we look at who those parents are, it was pretty much exactly an accurate demographic of who the parents are in the building. So the same number of furtile families that we have in the building, that's the percentage of parents that are also coming to our family event.
To tell you how many people are coming to this event, the Dance-A-Thon has been really popular, and each year, we have, this is our third year of the Dance-A-Thon, and we have increased quite significantly our number of people who come. And this year, we had 212 students come, and when we totaled family members, that included 550 people in the gym and the cafeteria. It was quite crowded. We also had Critters &amp; Company in November, and we had 73 students come to that evening event and 170 total with their families. And that event also had a component of some parent information.
So the activities involve, and I won't go in depth on each of these individual activities, but we've, there's something about, there we go. Each of the areas that we hope to address in our climate are addressed in color up here. We have some parent involvement goals, and they're in your packet, and they're pretty much self-explanatory, and we've talked a little bit about them already. We also have parent information goals. We've got parent conference information stations, we've got some newsletters, audio gecko because that is something that I do right now. I've gotten some very, very good feedback on, about every two weeks now, send home an email and a voicemail on updating parents on current events. And I thought we had it going at Greenville Park, and I was somewhere last night at a gig playing drums with a band that I'm in, and one of the band members had a phone call from their principal, they were doing the same thing. So I thought it was original, but perhaps they've got this going on in other places. We also have our Family School Connection goals. These are some things that we do each year, that we try to do to get families connected. We've got some goals getting students connected, and one of the more popular areas that we're looking at right now is Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. We don't intend to apply to be a Positive Behavior Intervention Support School. You need 80% buy-in from your staff to do that before providing the training and so forth. At Greenville Park, over the past five years, just through the natural process of asking the tough questions and deciding what direction we want to go, we are in the direction of a Positive Behavior Intervention School. The only piece that we have missing that you would see in any Positive Behavior Intervention School is the data collection piece. And so this year, we're going to be looking at piloting the software for Swiss Data Software. This software package is very reasonable, $180 for a year, and it collects the data and sorts it through kind of a HyperCard form for you. It's what they use in PVIS schools, and so we thought we'd look into that, and it looks promising in terms of giving us the information we need. And then other child connections to close out our presentation tonight. Our Core Essentials Character Education Program is something we're doing for our second year. We believe that the social curriculum is as important as the academic curriculum. And so we have a character education program, and each month, we have a new character trait. I'll show you what that means right now. Mrs. Swanson's class set a goal to cooperate. Cooperation was in November, a character trait, and she set a goal with her class to collect the toys, and they were able to do that. And this is a number of her students at the Community Action Center where we produced 358 toys for the Community Action Center. And then I'll just give you a real quick snippet here of one of our character videos that our Student Council produced. I'm going to show you about 15, 20 seconds to give you a flavor.
... caring enough to do something about someone else's need. Once upon a time, there were three students who saw a need and did something about it.
Meet Adeline. Adeline was a very happy girl and was very well-liked by everyone in the class.
I'm so happy, life is just great.
She was very quiet and shy.
And fine, we need for Kenzie. Kenzie was a very smart girl, but as well in school, her work is very easy for Kenzie.
Okay, so you kind of get a flavor. Each month, we have a character trait. The Student Council does a video presentation to illustrate that trait. We present that at building-wide meetings to the whole school, and then every month, we review those traits, and then we move on. One of the last pieces for climate is the parent connection, and we're going to be doing a study, a sent-off a survey to see who would be interested in doing a book study with the principal. And I've got seven families on the hook, and we're going to read the book, If Aristotle's Kid Had an iPod: Ancient Wisdom for Modern Parents. And one of the things that we're looking at there is helping parents get more of what they need as opposed to our communicating what we have to offer. And that's our presentation for the evening. So questions and more information.
Questions on Greenville Park's plan? Carrie?
I have a question. I'm almost afraid to ask it, because I don't want to make you talk for so terribly long. But talking about, you know, using DIBELS, using AIMS Web, using the DRA, is that confusing to staff to have all those different things going on? Or is it, you know, I'm just trying to get my head around all the different kinds of things that are...
Well, the district just knew we needed to pick something for universal screening, like DIBELS or AIMS Web. And the truth is, DIBELS is cheaper. DIBELS is less costly, and it's basically the same thing. Becky Gany and I were at the training for Minnesota Reading Corps in the cities in August, and they said, "We use AIMS Web." And we went, "What?" Because it was a matter of, had we, I don't know, I don't know, had we known that previously, if the district would have said, "Let's go that route." I asked, we asked right away, you know, "What if?" And they said, "No, you really can do both." Our AmeriCorps people do the AIMS, and they track the AIMS. The only confusing part is, I might get confused because numbers are slightly different. I might quote a teacher, like, second grade, middle of the year, you should be at 72 words per minute, and DIBELS might be 70 and AIMS Web might be 72, things like that. So I'll just refer to a chart that's, you know, close by me at all times. So it's not as confusing as I thought it would be. Teachers have had, we've had the DRA, the Developmental Reading Assessment, for a number of years, and we do believe in that as well. It gives us different data, and we also start with universal screening on all children. And then, even our children in AmeriCorps, we do DIBELS on them. We have DIBELS on everyone. And we, this year, had a, what did we call it, a team approach? And we had a core group of people. I did all the third grade for the ride, and did fourth grade. Mary did all the kindergartners. So we had a certain staff member that could be pulled, and we did that core. We just chose to do that in the fall. And then, the AIMS, the AmeriCorps members targeted kids that we assumed were needy, and we had more than enough. We maybe targeted 100 children, or we tested 100 children. But these tests are really short. They're real quick.
And there's good correlation between them, so it's...
Yeah, yeah. Well, actually, it could be, I mean, there's pros and cons. It was helpful to be like, "Oh, they were high in AIMS and they were low in DIBELS. What happened? What was the difference?" And in one case, it was our members were brand-new. And I went back, and I said, "Really? You have a 66 on this one child?" And I got a 35 on a different assessment. So it's new, and there's a number of, you know, most of the data is exactly identical. It's so close, 32 and 35. I mean, it's just splitting hairs. But DRA, if we find that a child is below proficiency in the universal screening, then we dig deeper, and we want to get the developmental reading assessment on those children. So we feel like it gives us more data to make our decisions.
You have a good question, though, because there are a lot of data sets out there these days, so...
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Julie?
I just had a comment. We had already heard Bridgewater and Sibley, and so we thank you for your report, and your reports were very similar in that a very strong emphasis on the team and how the team approach is working and the strong level of success we've seen, and it's only November. So congratulations on that. My question on RTI, when a student is receiving an RTI or is part of having those interventions done, is the parent notified of that?
In Minnesota, with Minnesota Reading Corps, yes, they do get a letter saying that you're in this program. But then also, we asked at the training, and they said, "Your school can put a general statement out saying our students in the school district in this building could have this service." So the people from Minnesota Reading Corps offered as a suggestion, or they'll say, "Children in the school could..." We chose to let parents know. And then at conferences, at reporting times, definitely, teachers communicate that. So we feel like it's e-communicated.
Good, thank you.
Those are just the programs that we're using for interventions. Frequently, a teacher might implement intervention in a classroom in a regularized setting, and that would not be reported, it'd just be part of their regularized strategies.
Okay, thank you.
John?
I had a question about the flex groups. When you were in front of us earlier, you mentioned that there was a challenge in coordinating the flex groups between the Companeros classrooms and the English classrooms. Is that still a challenge, or is that something that you've addressed?
Well, since the flex groups take place outside the core curriculum, it's easier than it would have been in the past with one Companeros teacher staying in a section of four and three contemporary. Because it takes place outside the core curriculum, the Companeros teacher accomplishes the goals of the Companeros program in the core curriculum, and then the flex allows us to have an additional 30 minutes with, 20, 30 minutes with the whole grade level. So once you're able to share students across four classrooms, it's a little bit easier. Do you have any other insights on that? No?
I haven't heard it to be a problem with scheduling as much. The reason we have four days a week might be because of the art schedule as well. They have art at different times, so they can get common time, four days a week. Dave, you might want to note, too, that we built that into the schedule from the beginning to the end.
Yeah, we have a building, we've had a building schedule for five, going on six years now, and we built the flex time into each of the grade level schedules. And so on a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday basis, because we've got the PLCs on the Wednesday, we're able to build those in on the four-day schedule where grade levels have it built in to do the additional 30 minutes in addition to the reading and the math core curriculum. So it's actually built into the building schedule. Does that make sense?
All right, thank you.
Other questions?
So I had just one. I was curious, so last year, that sounded like the challenge was these math probes and progress monitoring in math, and so now this year, it sounded like you're customizing what you're going to be able to, there's no set of, there's no DIBELS for math, so...
Correct. We had it last year, and when we moved into more of a district approach this year, we backed off on the math probes this year in lieu of working as a district with the other RTI coaches from the other buildings to determine what the curriculum-based measurement for math would be this year. My recommendation would be algorithmic probes, because there's correlational research to show that if you're proficient in algorithmic correlational, or, sorry, algorithmic probes, basic probes, there's a correlation between that and math achievement, not just geometry achievement and division achievement, but math achievement. We're looking for a curriculum-based measurement that's sensitive to even the slightest increase in proficiency in the overall content area of math.
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks so much, everybody. What a great, great presentation by the whole team.
Now we have the Area Learning Centers presentation. And board members, you would have a PowerPoint presentation that had been in your table
Dr. Richardson, Madam Chair, School Board Members, thank you for allowing me to come and share what we're doing at the Northfield Area Learning Center. And I have broken it into two sections, our 2011-2012 progress report, and then I'll talk about our 1213 site improvement plan. Our site councils are teachers within the ALC, and as you can see, these are pretty consistent names throughout the years, and I have to say, we truly are a team. We meet frequently to talk about the needs of our students, and I have to commend these people. They work very hard and with patience and perseverance to have success with our students. I don't know if you're familiar with the movie Groundhog Day, and I looked at past site improvement plans, and I feel like we've been here before, but it's what we work on every year consistently. And so our first objective was, we want to increase the... And so our first objective was, we want to increase the attendance rates of our students at the ALC. And what we would like to see is that 75% of our students would demonstrate an improvement in their attendance by 25% as measured by the year before. So what we, we spend a lot of time, have spent a lot of time with PLC, collecting and reviewing the attendance data of our individual students. We use a system of red, yellow, green, Greek, yellow, red. When we talk about the kids, we talk about attendance, the teachers have a good idea. And as we go through our list of students, we, if they're red, it's a warning, we need to stop and look at that. Yellow is caution, and green is there ago, their attendance is on track. We've researched and developed strategies to look at how we can change attitudes and beliefs about attendance. Kids who are coming to us, all of a sudden, they just don't quit coming to school. This has been an ongoing issue. And believe it or not, from our research, we see it starting as early as kindergarten. And those students who have had attendance issues there continues to progress throughout their school and school years. We also looked at how being bullied within the school setting, how that may affect attendance. So we did a, had a presentation on those effects. And then we also did a student survey on the attitudes and beliefs of students attending school. And I wanted to share specifically the student survey, because I thought this really showed some significant things from the kids. And 50% of our students believe attendance is an issue. And when we asked them to be more specific of why kids may not be coming to school, these were the key things that we saw. Lack of sleep. It's amazing the number of students who will tell or report that they get two or three hours of sleep a night. Work late hours, especially our older students who are 18, 19 years old, they're not only trying to get done with school, but they're also having to support, support themselves. No ride, issue with another person at school, and family concerns. So how do we address that? I bought alarm clocks for kids, so we can get them up in the morning. I have made wake-up calls for some kids who, who need that added support. We talk about the work issues and if what they can do, talk to their employer about maybe cutting back on some time or adjusting work time. On no ride, we actually have a couple of Northfield residents who are willing to volunteer and will pick up our older students if they don't have a ride. We call it a dial-a-ride, and they've been very great in helping out with that. Issues with other students within the school. We do have the support of the school psychologists, and this year, we were able to add time with a social worker, and this has been really benefit to me. I don't have all the time to meet with every student, and this has really helped a lot. And of course, family concerns, we're always working with the kids, trying to resolve some of those issues and talking with parents. Our daily average attendance, this is more of our progress, actually was 82.5%, which we think is pretty significant. But our individual attendance data shows that 18% of our students improved their attendance by 25%, which did not meet our goal of 75%. So we continue to work towards this, and this is, in the five years I've been here, we've been right in that, you know, 30 to 15%. It's pretty consistent. Our next objective was improving student learning as measured on the MCA test. Our goal was that we want 40% of our students to receive passing scores on the writing, reading, and math, MCA, and the grad test by June 2012. We continue to work to help students gain those, being able to achieve passing the test by teaching vocabulary. The teachers have been across curriculum that they've worked on vocabulary. We get some training, professional development, reading in the content area, and we also have math remediation. We continue with our Read 180 program, and are seeing real significant improvement with some of our students in the reading area. PLC was also spent, time was spent looking at instructional strategies. It's not, you know, every kid is so individual, so we have to look at what works for them, and it really becomes rather individualized for many of our students. We've looked at some positive behavior intervention, and I know Greenbelt Park was talking about PBIS, and we are in pretty good shape. We've already built some of that in. We have some really nice incentives for our students. And, and that goes along with our testing, you know, we want, we want to reward the kids as they're achieving those goals in their testing as well. And then we looked at test-taking strategies, and what we have found is, many of our kids have road test anxiety. It's been beneficial to test almost on an individual basis, bringing kids in one at a time. We hear the kids talk about if they're in a testing situation and they see other kids getting done before them, it creates some angst for them. So that, that's been beneficial, and we, we really look at it on an individual basis with each student, what's going to work best for them. So how did we do? Well, we, none, we had one ninth-grade student in our school last year, and they did not pass a writing test. I do have to commend, I think the academy is doing a great job at the high school, so we're not seeing ninth grade, which is, is really, I think, a good thing. 50% of our 10th-grade students were proficient on the MCA reading test, and this was an improvement. We had 36% the year before, so that was a, a gain of half of our kids. 18% of the 11th-grade students were proficient on the MCA math, and that was actually a decline, we had 26%. But we are providing a reading, or, I'm sorry, math remediation for those students to retake the test, and it, I have to say, it is really difficult for many kids to pass that test. So if we, we celebrate the ones that, that are successful with that. So what's in store for 2012, 13? Here we are again. It, it's back to the attendance issue. We want kids in school, we want them to be there so that they can be successful and earn that important diploma that's going to be so beneficial into the future. So again, we're looking at 75% to improve on their attendance as compared to the previous year. Our action plan, we're going to continue to collect and review that attendance data. Parent involvement, we're making calls, and we have done this over the years, we, if kids are not in school, we call right away in the morning. We really encourage parents to call us to let us know if their students are going to be there. I personally am making more parent phone calls this year to talk about the attendance issue and see what we can do to work together to get kids in school. We aligned attendance guidelines with the other schools within the district. We were kind of looking at the high school, and we were actually allowing our kids to be gone more than what they would have been if they were at the high school, so we've aligned that, so it would be comparable to, to the high school. For those of you who maybe aren't aware, we have eight grading periods during the school year, so about every 20 to 23 days, kids are getting credits on their transcript. But within that grading period, our attendance contract is that they cannot miss more than three days within that timeframe. And if they do, they, they don't get the credit. And this has really put some teeth into our, our program as well, and kids are very aware in monitoring their, now monitoring their attendance to see where that, and they're coming and asking me, you know, "Where am I at?" Because sometimes they, really, I don't think, realize that, where, where they're falling in place with that. We're also going to survey students again on attitudes and beliefs concerning attendance. And then this year, this is a new goal in talking with our teachers, we want to increase the academic performance of all ALC students. And so our goal is going to be, we want to increase, we're looking at grade point average of all ALC students, so that overall average GPA for 100% of our students will increase by .25% when compared to the same grading period one year ago. So what our action plan is, we're going to use the PLC time to review data on when the staff comes in January, I think we're coming the end of January. They're already collecting data, so they're going to be able to show you how we are progressing with that. One of the things the teachers wanted to do as well was to, for students to be able to look on family access to see their progress with each of their classes. And it's really been beneficial, they're using their iPads, they give the students the iPad and they pass it around the class. I think once a week, each of the teachers is doing this. And then there's that immediate feedback from the teacher, you know, if they're missing an assignment or whatever, they can, they can look at that. So that, that has been very beneficial. Every one of our students now can log in and check their grades. We've also done an honor roll recognition each grading period. We recognize kids who are on the B and A honor roll. And just a little anecdotal comment here, one of our students, I found out after I, we had done the recognition, and he had made the A honor roll, that the next day, one of my students, other student was telling me that he had gone on Facebook and posted his status was he had made the A honor roll, and this, he had never done anything like this before, so, and they get a certificate and a little reward thing that goes with that, so. We're also going to be looking at doing a book study, repair kit for grading, because we want to look at what are our grades based on? You know, hopefully, it's the academic piece that we're doing within the classroom. So we'll be reviewing that as well. And then, of course, we'll continue to monitor individual student progress. And one thing I do want to say, that our goal is for kids to get a high school diploma. And there's that frustration, of course, with attendance and some of the testing, but I do want to share that in the five years that I've been here, we have graduated approximately 150 students. So the payoff is there. Do you have any questions?
Thanks, Pat. Board members? Julie?
Absolutely, the payoff is there. I mean, it's just amazing, and I think you always come before us and really give us a reality check of what your students are facing beyond the walls of the classroom and, and the number of obstacles they have, and that you have such a good sense of that and are trying to, you know, really help them overcome the huge number of obstacles that they have. My question, last year, you talked about a, in your meet with us, it was the, the pilot, a new attendance and grading process?
Yes.
Is that the color coding that you're doing?
Yeah, and, and it's also the grading and attendance process we're looking at, that would be our eight grading periods per year, yes. So like I said, every 20, 23 days, the students are getting grades. Like, we ended a grading period today. So the kids will get the grades on the transcript, but it also ties attendance to that. So if they miss more than three times during that grading period, they, they can lose credit. We do have safety nets built in. You know, if, if it's a student who's missed four or five days, then we will allow them to make up. It might be coming in and doing an independent study night to make up some work. So we do have some safety nets. It also allows kids to get back into school if they bump out, say they've missed 10 days, okay? It's good, they're not going to earn credit. But what that shortened grading period does, it allows them to get back in. I have, I think, two students who will start back tomorrow who had bumped out because of attendance. So instead of waiting the nine weeks, they're back in within 20 days. So there's some hope there, because I think we were losing kids when, you know, they get three weeks into a nine-week quarter and they're already bumped out. So I think that's allowed kids to, so that, we're finding that to be much more successful.
Oh, it sounds like it. Great, thank you.
John?
When your goal is increased grades, how are you making sure that the grades are increasing because of better performance rather than...
That, that's a good point. And I think that's when we're going back to looking at, what are our grades based on? You know, and it, and it becomes very individualized with our kids, too, because there are some kids who will work very diligently every day, and there's other kids who come to us and might not do anything. So I think the teachers is looking at that improvement and, and, you know, basing the grade on that improvement, it's almost on an individual basis. I don't know if I answered your question, probably.
But I mean, in, in terms of just meeting that goal, it's, you know, there, there are a couple of ways to do it, but, you know, the, I mean, you could have kids who are sandbagging and then, you know...
Right.
Improve their performance.
Yeah.
You could have, you could have teachers saying, "Well, you know, let's meet this goal." And you could have individual coaching and tutoring that helps the students meet the goal. I mean, there's a lot of ways to do that, some are good and some not so good.
And I think that'll become a part of our PLC conversation as the teachers are looking at the data they're collecting concerning the goal with the increase in the GPAs. That conversation is going to come up, what are we, what are we basing that, how are we helping kids improve on that, on improving on their grades?
Other questions?
I had one, I was, well, I was commenting, a question was, I was glad to hear about the dial-a-ride, and I was just wondering with the Area Learning Center, we have so, we've got this volunteer corps that seems to be going to all the schools, and the Torch program has Carlton tutors, and do you, do you get, besides the dial-a-ride, is there that level of support that you get at the Area Learning Center?
We do have students from St. Olafette come in and, and help with the tutoring. We also have AmeriCorps.
Okay.
We have Promise Fellow who is with us full-time, and we utilize him as well in helping with some of those needs.
Great. And I got to sign a nice stack of diplomas or the certificates we get, so that was really, I, I love when we get to see that coming through. So you're right, that is the success measure.
Yeah.
So, thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to item number three, the technology transfer report.
Shouldn't start with the dollar signs up there, we'll start with something different. Well, good evening, and we are here this evening to give a high-level overview of the work that our four, our main four transformational technology task forces did over the past six months. We had more than 30 people across the district involved in task forces, including, we had two board members who participated, Ellen Iverson participated in our policy task force, and Anne Maple participated in our content and app selection. We had teachers and administrators, a whole wide array of people involved in these task forces. And our goal tonight is just to give you a few minutes snippet from each of those task forces, because it's really become very apparent that those task forces are not done. They have accomplished a portion of their goal, but we initially thought, oh, they'll probably be done by December, but we see that there's more work to... But we see that there's more work to happen after the proposal would come to you in late January. So we have, we've given them a break for December and then we're going to be bringing them back to do some continual work in late January and early February. We have our team here this evening, people who drew the short straw to have to come and present. But we have a great team. And what we're going to start off with this evening is we're going to talk about the apps and content group. And we have Carleen Sherman from Sibley Almond who are here to share that with us.
Our task force was charged with looking at the ways a tablet computer can be used to deliver content to students and frame a process to guide the selection of content. Two major areas for the focus, apps and digital textbooks. So much of tablet computing is app-focused. We anticipate the younger the grade level, the more apps that can be used. Apps come in all shapes, sizes, and prices. We have completed a number of discussions about the selection of apps. Since many content-specific apps are niche in nature, we believe leaving the selections of these to the classroom teachers will be a reality. To assist teachers in their selection of apps, we have identified the Learning and Hand resources as a great starting point for staff. This guide can assist teachers in making good selections of apps. When teachers seek funding outside of their own budget through groups like the Teaching and Learning Department or other building-level budgets, they will be required to complete an application that includes at least two different tools from the Learning and Hand website listed in the report. Digital textbooks and other paid content resources will be governed by the curriculum review process. The curriculum review process has been in place for more than eight years and has been modified to help each and every curricular area select the resources appropriate for their individual area. We have confidence that it is easily adaptable to selecting digital resources as well. This group has also designed a plan for long-term implementation of base expectations for instruction. This expectation ladder is based on the work of Dr. Ruben Fuentes Dura's SAMR model. This model focuses on several layers of transformation with educational technology: substitution, augmentation, modification, redefinition. The framework would focus on substitution activities during the first year, augmentation the second year, modification the third year, and redefinition during the fourth year. The concept would be to provide support to staff members to accomplish each stage at a mastery level by the end of each year of the implementation. A phased approach to baseline expectations will allow us to have a greater opportunity to institutionalize the new pedagogical changes.
And I just want to mention a little bit more about the SAMR model. If you do any research at all on one-to-one computing in the United States, this model comes up over and over again. And Ruben Fuentes Dura is a professor at Harvard. The baseline for his research was on Maine's one-to-one initiative. Remember, several years ago, Governor Angus King, just recently elected to the Senate out of Maine, put a lot of Maine's resources into giving a laptop to every student in the seventh and eighth grade. And Dr. Fuentes Dura did a lot of research about what were the different levels of technology use that he saw in those schools. And on any given day, you could easily see both substitution and redefinition in the same classroom. So our goal of using the SAMR model is to institutionalize the concept of moving things toward redefinition, because we're trying to change 100 years' worth of pedagogy in a short amount of time. And we know that those are the flash-in-the-pan kinds of things when you attempt to say, oh, we're going to do this overnight. If you notice, the other initiatives we've done, PLCs, RTI, we are in it for the long haul and we're focusing on making sure that we institutionalize those changes that we think are good for kids. And so the SAMR model is just a really interesting way of looking at it. Several of the things that you've seen so far are really great in that augmentation area, especially in RTI. Almost every RTI intervention that uses an iPad would be an augmentation. It's something that we could do without the technology, but the technology enhances it and makes it better than just pencil and paper. It's not that we're redefining the task, we're doing it in a different way. Augmentation has the ability to raise test scores, probably more so than anything else in this model. That's our low level. We want to, we want to raise those test scores, but we want to get to that point of redefinition. And a great example of redefinition is movie making. Or another example would be, I shared with Mr. Thornton today, an app called, what was it called? Which was it called, Mark? It was a, it was a simulation, Pocket Law Firm. And it's a simulation that you take over a law firm and you have only so many dollars to spend. And what you do is you have to pick people who are specialists in each amendment area. Then the app delivers cases to you and you have to determine, do I have the personnel to be able to put into this and have them look at this and give the recommendation? Or do I have, as the owner, have to do that? That's the kind of thing that we could not do without the technology, if that makes sense. So we're really putting a lot of eggs in this SAMR basket, but we're not alone. I've been at the TIES conference, saying every presentation I was at talked about the SAMR model as the gold standard for trying to redefine that. So I just wanted to explain that a little bit more.
I was part of the Policy and Procedures Group, and this group was charged with reviewing policies and practice documents from other school districts and to make some critical initial decisions on important components on the practice document that need to be localized to Northfield. The committee was, with permission, adopted a core practice document developed by Farmington Public Schools with changes to meet what we believe is important to Northfield. Some of the key considerations of the task force are, at what grade level can students take the device home in a one-to-one environment? The earliest would be grade four. Beginning with the second semester of the year, the grade level would receive the device. Grade five students would begin during the second quarter of the year, they receive the devices. And grade six through 12 would be allowed to take them home at the beginning of the year with which they receive the device. But would require to attend an orientation session with the parents, guardian, or guardian prior to the school year. What kind of insurance practice would be the second consideration we would use? While this is still under consideration, the task force will be recommending that a $25 fee be charged for the purpose of assuring this device for students who are able to bring them home. We are still considering Apple Care Plus for another insurance vendor and are also investigating self-insurance strategies. And the final consideration is looking at how to implement consequences for students who misuse their iPad in a one-to-one environment. When the device is a textbook, notebook, and other things you may need for class, it isn't practical to take the device away. We are recommending that the district leverage the Student Citizenship Handbook as a vehicle for finalizing the consequences for misuse. In the high school grade levels, we are considering providing more freedom for students to have control over installing apps on their own device. In this scenario, a consequence could be more restrictive access. Mr. Hillman met with High School Student Activities Council and has been discussing the concept with them as well.
And the policy group, which Ellen has been a part of, it's deep stuff, because it's the stuff that people worry about. When we did a recent survey, one of the biggest things that comes back is how are we, what happens when a kid breaks it? What, how, when they, can they take them? All those kinds of very practical things that teachers want to know. And so we really focused on those core components with policy. This is also just, we're trying to be predictive of all the potential scenarios that come out, because we don't even have a proposal yet. But what we're trying to do is predict the questions that the public is going to expect us to be prepared for. So we don't know, whatever we're going to recommend for students to take them home, but we're trying to say, if fourth graders were to take them home or were to have the devices, we would consider this. So we're trying to consider a whole host of different pieces, and that's important. And the other piece is that if we were to move forward with any kind of student initiative, that policy then gets locked into place after we decide those pieces, because we want to make sure that it's practical for the students that we're talking about. The other thing that you heard here just a moment ago that I need to emphasize is the first time that we've talked about a fee. And as we researched a number of other school districts, we found nearly every district that we saw had some kind of insurance fee, ranging from, the lowest that we found was $39, much higher than that. You can see that we are looking to recommend something that's significantly less than that. It's something that seems to be reasonable, yet would have a great opportunity to offset the cost of insurance. But that will be part of the proposal. It's not something that's locked in, you would have an opportunity to decide on that. But we also, since we are thinking about it, figured we need to bring it up in December before we get into the proposal stage, so you and the community can start thinking about that. Again, we've seen almost every other one-to-one document that we've looked at, and where there are more than a dozen policy documents that we looked at, had some kind of fee associated. We would be significantly less than any of those fees that we found. But we do think it's an important piece. There's a piece about ownership, when I've paid a little something, there's a number of different pieces that we're looking at there. So we just want to get that out in front of you, so that people have the opportunity to start thinking about that. Now we're going to move, and that was Greg Gellino, by the way, Middle School Assistant Principal. I noticed he did not introduce himself. So now we have Mary Hansen to talk about professional development.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity. The main purpose of our task force was in the rollout to this staff. So we had over 50 training sessions, I'm sorry, 50 training sessions total. We started in the summer with having the staff come in during tech boot camp to receive training and receive their iPads. And as we all know from research, a one-shot deal does not really do it. So during the school year, we've expanded that and buildings, at the building site have weekly iPad 20 minutes. They're not just minutes, they're 20 minutes' worth of staff development. And the staff has been providing that training at the building level where they have seen their needs. I've been at the TIES conference on Saturday and Sunday and have found two very interesting aspects that we will look into seriously for staff development in the coming years. On Saturday, I attended Making Your Own Textbook and the implications of that and how wonderful that can be. And not just teachers making textbooks, but students also contributing to this and discussing, of course, the legal copyright and some of this. And then yesterday, I attended one and it was kind of interesting, it flows right into what Heather Riden mentioned about, they're looking for extra minutes for math. And Jenna Linskins, doing her research for her dissertation in Wisconsin and observing high school classes, found that with the use of iPads, instructors were saving 10 minutes per class period with the use of the iPad, rather than handing out papers and doing that kind of collecting homework, but to have it done electronically. And if you do the math, 10 minutes per class period is almost an hour per week. It would be 50 minutes per week, which would be almost 36 hours per year that they would have an additional instructional time. Now, she's done her research on the high school level. I don't know if that would work for elementary math, but it does have some interesting implications. So in terms of future staff development, we have quite a few areas we can look at to improve our practice. And one of the things we're looking at in Northfield is changing our tech boot camp. Previously, we've done it a week long, and if that happens to be the week you're on vacation, you miss the entire tech boot camp. So we're looking at going to a model of Tech Boot Camp Tuesdays, where every Tuesday in the summer, we would be offering some technological training. And that obviously alleviates the problem of vacation, but it also allows teachers to attend, if we have like iPad training, three Tuesdays in a row. If they feel they need an extra scoop or want to hear it again or have additional questions, they can practice for a week and then come back and receive that training. So that's what we've been doing with the policy or the Professional Development Committee. Thank you.
I've got Mary on several of the task forces, so. I'm going to report on the Communication Task Force, and our Communication Task Force really did the bulk of its work early in the year, talking about how we are going to discuss with you and the community the progress that we've made. You know that we've had the expandable iPad Minute reports, that we've had five of those, and I think they were excellent. Then we've got the one from Amy Allen and Katrina Mead here playing as we're talking. I enjoyed that, I hope that you did too. It was very good. And then we, of course, have been continuing to update the Transformational Technology blog, you know, roughly about once a month in terms of with just what's going on. And as we're heating up toward the proposal stage, you'll see that we'll be updating that blog more often, so that people have access to the communication that they need. Couple of other pieces to talk about. Dr. Richardson, Director Stephanie Schaubach and I have been meeting to look at the financing part of the proposal. And much of that will be dependent upon what grade levels we propose for a one-to-one, if we look at some kinds of POD initiatives and other grade levels. And what we're really looking at and we're striving for there is, again, to be looking at a sustainable plan, not something that is just, oh, we can do it this time around, but who knows, three years from now. School finances, you know, looking out long-term can be a challenging piece. But our goal is to, as far as we can see into the future than any proposal that we would bring to you, is something that we would be able to finance within the current scope of the different pieces that we've looked at, maintaining our fund balance, doing those kinds of pieces, trying to bring a proposal to the table that does that. And it's, as I look at what other schools are doing, I've got good questions about how they're going to do that the next time around. We're not just interested in this time around, we're interested in the next time and the time after that. We don't want to be a school that has a one-to-one initiative in some of our grades and then has to take that away. We've seen that happen right here in Minnesota. And I imagine that would be very difficult to go from a one-to-one, you know, back to a paper-based system. So again, really good due diligence in terms of trying to find what's the right answer in that particular area, and we continue to look at that. So I just know people have those questions, so we want to share with you where we're at on that. And then our timeline, just want to talk with you that, remember that our task force reports tonight, we gave you just a high-level overview, because we knew there were six reports on the board schedule and we wanted to make sure we were timely. So we gave you that high-level overview. We are preparing to schedule our community meetings in January, where these will be expanded reports. And we'll use the same process that we did last year. We'll give about a 20 to 30-minute overview, break people into groups and try to get feedback again from our community, because the task forces and these community meetings are designed to inform the proposal that we'll bring before you, asking for input before we actually make the proposal, rather than waiting for it all afterwards. Again, our recommendation to you about any kind of implementation would be in late January. And then after we give you the proposal, we're going to give the community another chance to come back and tell us what they think, because we think that it's really important that our community have that opportunity. So we'll have another community meeting for people to discuss the actual proposal. And then we hope that you would give consideration for proposal in early February, if that makes sense. So again, our task force reports tonight were designed to give you a flavor of what those groups were talking about over the past several months, designed to show you that we are looking under lots of nooks and crannies in terms of trying to put together a proposal that is comprehensive and tries to think of as many things and as many questions as we can. We want to go into something like this eyes-wide-open. And we just wanted to reiterate to you the timeline of what we're looking at. So this is a complex process. There are, we are not the only school looking at this. There are hundreds and maybe, you know, hundreds of school districts in Minnesota that are looking at it, all in different timeframes. What's important is that we find the right mix and the right proposal for our school district, that, because this is not a technology initiative. We've been talking a lot about technology, but this is a learning initiative that happens to use technology. We've said to this to you before, all the gadgets in the world mean nothing if we don't have committed teachers who understand their students and understand how to use this device with their students to help them increase their academic and their social abilities. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Board members, questions for Matt or the Technology Committee members?
I had one clarification.
Yes.
So the, you're thinking that, when you're saying late January to the board, so January 28th is our second meeting, so that's when we're thinking of the recommendation to the board. And then sometime before February 11th then is when those other sort of activities would be happening?
Yep, that window between the last January board meeting and the first board meeting in February. Our goal would be to have that before, of course, the Thursday before the board meeting, so that anything that we glean from the community can be part of the packet that goes home to you. We know that deadline well and we will try to make sure we have everything there for you, so that you have all the information that you need to consider.
John?
How long has the insurance part, the fee been part of the discussion? Because I guess my recollection was that was not part of the discussion.
Yeah, it's really in the last couple of months, as we started to investigate other district plans, where we were, frankly, we were a little surprised to see it. And it occurred so often that we, as we talked and looked at that, it appears very clearly that's a way that school districts are trying to help ensure, cover the insurance part for their students. And the number of different districts have a number of different ways to do it. But as we started to look at that this fall and look at other districts' documents, it was very clear that we saw a fee as part of that. And you know what, the best way to think about it, as it clicked for me, the little light bulb above the head was, if you think about, for example, just the school supplies that the iPad potentially could replace, families are spending quite a bit on school supplies every year, and if this device has the opportunity to reduce that, we think it's going to be maybe not an offsetting feature. We would never say that it's going to be cheaper. We've said that all along, not going to be cheaper, not going to be cheaper upfront, but we think that that has an opportunity for But we think that that has an opportunity, first of all, to help people have that additional little bit of buy-in in terms of I've paid a very nominal fee to have this device, to be able to take it home, because it would only be charged, we're only considering it for students who would be allowed to take the device home. So that, you know, depending on how the proposal comes out. And it's something we would propose to you and you could certainly choose to do something else. But we feel it's important to bring that to you, that that's how some other districts are financing this. And when we thought about what would be a good fee, what would be a fee that would be appropriate for our district, we've landed around that twenty-five-dollar model. If you look at Apple Care, it costs seventy-nine dollars and we could divide that over three years. The logic is that just about covers the Apple Care, if that's, if that would be the way we chose to go. There, we've also seen some other insurance options that are coming out because of the advent of one-to-one in schools. You're seeing a number of groups that, I'm getting flyers every other day, let us insure your iPads for you. And so we're doing due diligence, taking a look at those. I do have some concerns about that particular model, but we're looking into them and seeing if they can sage my concerns about that kind of model. But just, John, it really just came in the last couple of months as we started to see what other districts were doing.
Other questions?
That's why we told, that's why we shared that now that we're just thinking about. We didn't want anybody to be caught flat-footed that that wasn't something we're thinking about.
No? All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much.
All right, we are ready to move on. Number four is the Arcadia Charter School Annual Report. My incoming guys here to report.
Hello.
Welcome. And board members, you should have had in your packets a report.
There we go. All right, so I'm presenting the annual report from last year, the 2011-12 school year, the final report that will be for Arch Tech Charter School. Been moving forward now, Arcadia Charter School. So as we go through the presentation, it's a summary of the annual report. So I'll try to keep it clear and concise and leave it to questions then at the end. It is the mission of the Northfield School of Arts and Technology. And the mission will not be changing for Arcadia, to prepare our students to transition intellectually, emotionally and ethically to higher education and future employment. A big thing for us this year is that we went through this name change process most of all of last year. And it's important for our community to know that and then also the Northfield School Board, that our program isn't changing, our name changed, but the programming and how we do it day-to-day is staying the same. To give a little synopsis on school administration, this is my second year as the school director. The team I have is me wearing a number of hats because of our small size, kind of the economy of size. We have our school business manager, Rebecca McMullin. We have a school social worker, part-time, and then that person also is a part-time special education coordinator as well, Lisa Malika. But a big piece for our school is being in our small nature that many of us wear multiple roles, including the aspect of, in charter schools, board members consist also of schoolteachers or instructors on staff. So a number of us do a number of administrative roles besides myself. School demographics for the 2011, apparently the twenty thousand eleven twelve. Two thousand eleven, twelve school year, the demographics relatively stay the same. Our free and reduced lunch population increased a little bit and has increased again going into this school year. That's not completely unheard of with the economy the way it's been and looking at that. Our special education still hovers around that twenty-five percent of our population is in special education. And that can have a huge impact, obviously, on our programming. You know, all teachers have a number of tools in their toolbox for working with kids with special needs. When you have a quarter of your population, you utilize those tools quite a bit throughout the school day. Residents of Northfield, again, this last year was about eighty-one percent. Typically, it's about that seventy-five to eighty percent are from Northfield. And then that twenty to twenty-five percent are from other school districts around, like Cannon Falls, Lakeville, Farmington, Fairbowl and so on. And then our minorities, again, is a very small portion for our population. We have a hundred and twenty-six kids, ten percent is not too much of a minority population. Enrollment, and you can see enrollment has, for the most part, been pretty stable over the last five years. We saw a decline this last year in our ADM to a hundred and fifteen students. We have a larger population of eleventh graders last year, now seniors this year, kind of a bubble coming up through our group. And a number of those students interested in PSEL and taking advantage of that program, which then you see a decrease in our ADM numbers as well. So our estimate for this year, we do have a hundred and twenty-six students. We budget a hundred and eighteen students, because we know this year we'll probably have about six students ADM total that will be through PSEL. We have about sixteen to seventeen students taking advantage of that program, anywhere from taking a class to being a full-time PSEL student. And the onset of online learning has opened that door even more. Students that weren't interested in driving anywhere, that can now take an online class and it's a PSEL college course. Our high school programming piece, we do have the twenty-three credits to graduate, the same twenty-three credits, you know, put out in state statute, looking at that. And then very similar to the Northfield School District, the increase that we have is we require more of the arts credit. We have two-point-two-five credits in arts and then less in the elective piece. So we're looking for students to do, whether it's the visual arts, the, you know, dance, music, et cetera. Our middle school program, so the six-eight portion of our program, a very project-based piece, but has that core curriculum, core education piece included with it. We do a thematic approach to it and we have a three-year cycle. This last year for the twenty-eleven, twelve school year, we had four terms, we had four themes. And we looked at the Victorian era, systems, mystery and service learning. And that theme includes not only a literature piece that the students follow as well, but then the historical piece as well. So when you look at our schedule, our students are still taking the core rotation of mathematics, social studies, science, language arts. But they meet what I would say less minutes per week in those, because we have about thirty to forty percent of our day that's project-based. And that's integrating those areas together. The academic goals for the twenty-eleven, twelve school year, we had our two academic goals, one in math, one in reading. The math goal, we split into two pieces. We looked at middle school and we looked at, at high school. And then the reading goal was school-wide. Math continues to be an area that we struggle in. This is, when we look at the middle school piece, we had forty-one percent in the two thousand ten-eleven school year that had met proficiency. The scores we had at the end of this last year were thirty-nine point two. Statistically, we're basically, we stayed flat. One of the issues that we face is with the small population of students that we have, the large percentage that each student accounts for. Depending on the statistic, you know, a student can count for anywhere from three to five percent. So if a student doesn't make proficiency, you didn't just drop a quarter of a percent or a percent, we dropped five percent. So we see fluctuation in that definitely from class to class, year to year. To give some perspective, you know, our group of sixth graders that came in this last year, we had about fourteen new sixth graders that came to us. Eleven or so of them came to us under proficient coming in. And so those students, we showed huge growth using the NWA MAP test. And we made that growth, but we went from partial proficiency to partial proficiency. We didn't see, instead of a year's worth of growth, we needed to see a year and a half's worth of growth. So that's an area that we're still working to, how do we increase that, that piece? We've increased the number of minutes that they have per week. We've also gone to additional online support as well. I know Northfield School District uses Study Island, we're looking at that as well. We were using, we're using an online source called Mobymath as well to get students additional pieces outside the classroom and that parents can use and utilize at home. The goal for us, again, in the academic piece for eleventh grade, again, that eleventh grade piece, we had poor scoring on the MCA twos as they were. With the grad test, we had forty-six percent of our students scoring with the grad test. A number of those students already have taken it in the fall this year and already passed the test. There were students that were on the bubble, that were within a couple of questions and would have passed. But this is a big contention is that the grad test and where students are at, are they ready in eleventh grade to take the grad test and ask the questions that they are written as? Our reading goal, we had had eighty-two point six percent the year before. We have seventy-six point six percent ending of this last year, above the state average in reading and continue to stay above the state average in reading. The question that we have now and I've met with Dr. Richardson as well to have this discussion that what do we do with reading when we start to plateau? When our student population, what other pieces can we go make our goal about? And so we're looking at breaking down the goal instead of just by the standard, but looking at the strands within it. So looking at different pieces of literacy as opposed to just reading as a whole. So that we can focus on that. We can still see improvement there, but what we're seeing is we're starting to plateau with the group of students, no matter which grade level is coming through. Another component of the annual report, we do a school parent survey each year. It's pretty extensive. There are a number of statistics within the report and that is for you guys to look through. I did pick one of those out in particular about school climate. And that is that the staff create a positive learning environment for learning. And looking at that, you know, with what we have advisors, which would be like a homeroom, teachers, core class instructors, now when you look at agreeing and strongly agree, we're ninety percent and above. You know, so our families are very, you know, thrilled with the positive learning environment that we are creating. You know, a lot of times when we're looking at this, we're looking at such a small number and we look at the data and we're never going to satisfy everybody. But we should be very proud that, that we're looking at ninety-plus percent of people happy that we're creating that positive learning environment. Innovative programming, you know, we continue, one of the things with being small is we have a lot of flexibility as well. We end each school year with May term. And I think I presented this last year as well. And looking at the last three weeks of the school year, we have an experiential piece. And we, the kids sign up to do an all-day course for those three days that gets them out of the building, gets them to different pieces. That's when we do our Wolf Ridge trips, those types of things. And it energizes the students for the end of the year. A lot of times we see the end of the year become, it's nice out, we want to be out of the building. We're looking for the school year to kind of come to a close. And we energize those kids for those last three weeks of the year. And we have a lot of fun with it as well. And the titles get a little creative as we go. So we had forensic science and physical anthropology, then learned everything CSI and beyond. SCAM, which was society, culture and media, with so much of the literacy piece coming out in all of the standards. You know, they really, they tackled marketing and what are, what are you seeing every single day? The kids loved it. Your place in the world, that was tied together with our Wolf Ridge trip. Where students went up to Wolf Ridge, they looked at the geography pieces of it, Qiu Cashing and so on. Our writers workshop group, which is a creative writing group, they tied together with a trip to the Black Hills as well and worked on a compilation of writing pieces for that three weeks. And then Fascinating Fables and Plays, our theater group. And then a culture piece, looking at a couple of different cultures in various of the United States. With our arts piece as well, we continue to have our, things like our, we have our Shameless fundraiser, which we call Thanksgiving. It's more of a variety show, but if the kids are involved, they absolutely love to do it. Our Arts for Martin program in January. This last year, we took advantage of the Guthrie. And we applied for a small programming grant with it. And we got to, we did, we participated in Guthrie's school, our students on the stage. And the Guthrie actors came down to us and we had twenty-four hours with them. And they wrote a play. And then our students went up to the Guthrie and performed on stage. And it was a fantastic experience for them and they loved it. So we produced the play Oliver, which very much had to realize that it was the play Oliver, not the musical. Very, very different tone to each of those. And then Round Town, especially this year as well, the Flying Foot Forum, which is a dance company, came down and worked with our students last spring. They have now come back for a reprised, working with St. Olaf in Carlton this year and I think into next year. And our students are participating in that as well. We also had last year, when I presented last year, we were in the middle of an addition project under our building. With our new lease, we signed to add on to our space as well. We added about two thousand square feet under our space. And we added two classroom spaces. We added more specific science classroom space for us to have more specialized science laboratory piece. And then another space that geared a little bit more towards the arts. A big piece for this is we didn't raise the student population. Hundred twenty-six is the cap that we have and we're not raising that piece. We just added space for kids. So this has helped us utilize the space we already had a little bit more effectively and then also having additional space to have kids in. The, another big portion of the annual report is our school finance piece. And we continue to add to our fund balance and going in the right direction in that positive direction. For the two thousand, the FY eleven piece, which is the part reported into the annual report, we met our two percent, we saved it in our budget piece. But when we entered into our new lease, we changed over a lease deposit piece as well. So we didn't see as large a fund balance growth within that fiscal year two thousand and eleven, although we stuck to our budget and we made sure that we were adding to our fund balance. And then for the FY two thousand and twelve, which our audit just ended and those reports are being generated for the December thirty-first deadline, we added twenty-nine thousand dollars to our fund balance. So we continue to make our two percent goal and continue to add to that. And then the news piece with the fiscal forecast for the state just helped that even more. You know, three, four years ago, we were spending anywhere, you know, from five to seven thousand dollars on interest, going out and getting loans to cover the holdback piece as we were building our fund balance. This year, we'll probably spend anywhere from a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars total on interest. And that's giant for us. We're putting money towards kids instead of towards finance charges. And then a staff development piece, you know, we've continued to participate into the Q-Cop program. This is our ninth year doing Q-Cop. And our staff utilizes, we meet thirteen different times throughout the year in their workshops that are more directed towards our programming. This year, we are doing a third of it towards mathematics and incorporating mathematics throughout all subject areas. Another third of it is in project-based learning. So helping everybody, refreshing, you know, just energizing our staff around that. And then student management and looking at those three areas this year for Q-Cop. The other pieces, we utilize the Wednesday late start days. We have our PLC groups, we meet in a high school group and a middle school group. Much smaller number of teachers, so it's, everybody's in two PLCs. And questions? Hopefully that wasn't too raced through.
Questions? Julie?
First of all, thank you for the report.
Yeah.
I, as part of the charter contract last year, there was a renewal, or there was an evaluation team that had come up with some specific recommendations. And I was wondering if you had done any work towards implementing some of what they had recommended?
They have a lot of, the education pieces around programming, working on beefing up our, like, our project rubric, finalizations, those pieces, absolutely. That work, the proposal forms and stuff, this last summer, our staff looked at those pieces. And making, you know, getting feedback also from students about their usability as they're filling out the forms. And so that changed and that was implemented into this fall. And then it, looking at, we have more of a generic finalization rubric that we add to, depending on the student's project, our project. We're looking at adding some more specified ones, depending on if it's in a science area, if it's in a social studies area, that is not if it's in a social studies area, that is not just the generic piece, but also something for staff members to call upon. So absolutely, we've been looking at those pieces. And then within the middle school curriculum piece, we've had this three-year rotational piece, this thematic approach to it and not basically taking those themes and looking at the next evolution of that piece, integrating more. And a lot of time, a lot of what that, they reported on was how are we integrating more of the subject areas into the project-based piece for the themes? Not just, a lot of time when we, you know, we first came about the themes, they were very literature driven and so it was like language arts kind of drove that whole process there. And now looking back and saying, okay, how is science going to come into that and how is our social studies program coming into that more integrated?
And then just as a follow-up, two of the other key recommendations they had was PE curriculum and technology.
P, technology, we can, again, continue to add to our technology as we go through the year and then also looking at our technology plan for the next phase of do we go down the avenue of tablet technology, do we go, you know, which direction do we go in? A lot of that is coming through this year, is looking at those pieces. The PE curriculum continues to be an area of finding the resources to have people there. We have a very part-time PE, FTE and finding staff people to fill that and be consistent. We've utilized a lot of programming through the local Y as well, looking for those programming, that's not been necessarily consistent. So trying to find additional programming that whether, you know, talking to the Northfield School District and looking at that piece, some of the avenues we've gone down haven't panned out like we'd like to see them.
So what are, what is the state required for you to do for PE?
With our students, our middle school students are integrated the PE into their advisory piece and so those advisory teachers are doing PE. We don't have a set credit in the middle school programming for that. With high school piece, we offer a health program as well and then we also have, offer credit pieces, but they fall under our elective credits. But we would, we, it's an area that we are looking to expand upon dramatically.
Okay. Thank you. Any else?
I just had a follow-up. So on the report, you talked about these, the focus of math and having it be kind of a site-wide focus and looking at strategies. And you mentioned Study Island. I just wondered if there were other pieces that you're, and how you might, especially because you mentioned there were so many students starting so far behind, how you're continuing to monitor that?
The big thing, we hadn't used an online remedial piece before and so looking at Study Island this year or IXL, we started the year off looking, or using what's called Mobi Math, which is geared more towards sixth, seventh and eighth grade, but we need something that will extend further beyond just that. So we're seeing students using it and we're, because we're able to monitor and track, we're seeing students use it to work on those students that are coming into us as middle schoolers, but we need something that will extend beyond that for high school.
Thanks. All right. Thank you so much, Ryan.
Thank you.
And really, you need to know that Ryan is doing pretty well at this point. Ryan is a new dad as of Thanksgiving Day.
Oh, congratulations.
He's in vice, and have a new baby born. And I was gonna say, you're up every couple hours anyway. I don't know if he's crying or you're crying, but I'd say he's doing pretty well in terms of being on his feet and going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Board members, note.
I'm just gonna suggest that we flip and do the Eagle Bluff trip piece first and then we'll do the initial thoughts in the camenter. It'll give Jeff a chance to take off after we get done with this and then it'll be down just to the hardcore that need to be here to the very end.
Any concerns with that?
It's a bitter end.
Are you there?
Oh, no. No, no, it's not bitter.
All right. Well, we're gonna go on to, item number six is now item number five, which is the seventh grade Eagle Bluff trip.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for hanging in there until our presentation here. And basically, on behalf of the Northfield Middle School and the community services, we just wanted to make sure that the board and all the people in the community are just aware of some of the dilemmas that are due to a very good thing, which is increasing enrollment, going into seventh grade next year, that will create some decisions that need to be made about how we may run an environmental learning center trip. And so what we're going to do here, the good news is just about all the information you need about the recommendation is in your packet, so we won't go over that again. But I'm basically going to take a quick look back at the history of the trip and then have Erin look forward to how a recommendation might play out in the same way that we have analyzed for you in the packet, just looking at what are the benefits and what are the downsides to things. So looking back at, the main thing I want to share with you is that the trips that the middle school has hosted over the years have been tremendously successful. Students have enjoyed them, the chaperones have enjoyed them and the staff that have gone along have enjoyed them and they've had a special experience that takes place when you leave the school building and go out into the woods and the prairie and the ropes courses and things like that. So the work that Mick Hamilton did, lining this trip up as a faculty advisor and Diane Van Ruden assisting him and more recently Amy Allen as the, as the staff advisor and Amy Stowe helping her and Greg Gellino assisting as the administrator overseeing all that, it's been phenomenal. So this is no means a recommendation that indicates dissatisfaction with how the trips have gone. It's merely taking a look at a trip that's been going on almost a decade now and looking at what's changed in what's expected of the middle school and also what's changed here numbers-wise that makes us make, want to make you aware of what some of the situations would be. So we're, we're, in all of our proposals that you see in the packet, we are recommending that we utilize the services of communities, that we utilize community services because running a trip like this is more in line with what community services does nowadays in a school district and it really stretches us away from what the middle school is expected to do in current times. So be happy to answer questions about the specifics when we're finished, but right now we'd like Erin to look ahead to how community services might play a part in future trips.
Thank you, Jeff. So going forward with the, if the recommendation in your packet would be if community services would host the ELC trip and what kind of are the pros and cons of that moving forward? One is that we would be able to kind of maintain the district's ELC tradition in a similar experience with the curriculum they have experienced both at Eagle Bluff or if it was to be looking at a different ELC experience, we would certainly be able to continue that tradition. Community Services Department also has the software that can help efficiently register participants. We do have the capability for online registration, which a vast majority of Northfield members already utilize for programs. And then you can also, of course, we have an office that is staffed Monday through Friday for in-person mail-in or fax-in registrations as well. A program that would be similar, somewhat in nature would be the Ski Club, which is a program we took over two years ago that had been run through the district. It was a cumbersome process for the high school office to kind of maintain registrations. Families had to walk in, pay with a check or cash and so that, we did take over that process two years ago and I do think it has really streamlined how participants are able to register for the program and certainly eased the burden on the high school office. All students of the eligible age range and grade range would have access to the program. This would include all district residents, so those that attend the Northfield Middle School as long, including St. Dominic's, Arcadia and homeschool students. So it would encompass a wider range than just the middle school students. Scholarship money would continue to be available through the Myrtle Houston Estate Environmental Learning Trust Fund. This is what the middle school currently accesses for funds for anyone who does need scholarships, which does then continue to free up the money that anyone who needed scholarships through community services does have a pool they can access every year, but it is a limited dollar amount. So this would allow students to be able to take an ELC trip without it tapping into the funds that they also have available for other programs through the Community Services Division. One thing, because the program has been running through the middle school, they certainly have the history of how this program has been operating. So we would again look to have a middle school coordinator that would work very collaboratively with community services to kind of help us transition as we kind of learn the ropes of how this program has been handled, both leading up to actually getting to the trip site and then once the students are there. We would continue to look to have both middle school staff and other licensed teachers in the community have, have the opportunity to service pay the chaperones. It has certainly worked well in the past. It does build that collaborative team environment through grade levels that are participating in the trip. So we would certainly look to have those staff available again. The environmental education activities would become a supplement and not a replacement for school-based instruction. By looking at us, at the Community Services Division running the program and then not looking away from the school year calendar to times where there are potentially breaks or in August, we're looking to kind of complement what is currently the regular school schedule. Of course, then with neither staff nor students missing any instructional days. And that the ELC trip, if it was scheduled during August or in some of the gap weeks of break, would fill some gaps in the community services current programming and the PLUS programming. An example would be this summer, we, in the Community Services Division and PLUS tend to run programming about through the end of July. And so we do look at having a gap kind of in the early, early, mid-August before school starts, that we do not run a lot of programming that would have the potential to have some offerings through this ELC trip that are not currently available. And market forces would help to find the best possible match between the ELC site and dates desired. By potentially looking at other dates, it does potentially mean that there are other ELC locations that we could consider. So I think we potentially have flexibility on the site based on the dates that we potentially are looking at and how those fit in the calendar. Then a few of the cons that potentially could come up. We do need a minimum number of registrations to cover the cost of the trip. The Community Services Division would not incur a loss by running this program. So we would have to set a minimum number and need to reach that number in order to make the trip effective for us to be running it. The number of students who are able to participate would depend, be dependent on the number of spaces for any given trip that was scheduled. In the past, the ELC Eagle Bluff most recently has given, has told the district the number of spaces they have available. So again, we would be, you know, limited to the number of, if they say we only have two hundred spaces, we would, we would still be limited to the number of spaces that we were given. Scheduling conflicts and lack of available dates could force the Community Services Division to skip a program during any given year. I don't, I don't know if that is foreseeable, but I am gonna put that out there, that if we can't find an ELC location that is available and we can't make it work within the district calendar, it would potentially mean having to potentially skip a year. And then just like anything, a new format would represent the change from the previous model that community members and the district is accustomed to.
Before we take any questions, I just want to make sure we highlight what the recommendation is because I know that not everybody outside the board members has a packet in hand and there might be people watching on TV or whatnot, so we'll just kind of highlight what the recommendation is. We're recommending that under any scenario, we have, we work with community services collaboratively to operate the program. We think that in a balanced school calendar, there's some excellent opportunities to place an environmental learning center trip. We also recognize or believe that in traditional school calendar, there are also some excellent times that we could fill a gap in programming and avoid school days. And in summary, the primary thing that we're recommending besides working with community services is looking for opportunities outside of regular school instructional days to host this trip and to continue this valuable experience. So we'll leave it open to any questions that you might have and we know that you have some timelines involved, so we're certainly available besides tonight to help with questions and to come back as you see fit to help out with whatever decision-making or whatever guidance that, that the board or superintendent has for us.
Board members, questions? John?
Could you kind of just summarize the real concern here and the real, the main reasons for, for considering this change other than the incoming class size? Is there, I mean, that's the one that's sort of highlighted here on the front page of the memorandum, but what are the?
In the memo that you have, there's all kinds of other factors that are involved there and they primarily have to do with missing instructional time and with, if you're looking at an average year where two-thirds of the seventh grade students go on the trip, that means one-third are staying back and in essence, they're treading water instructionally until the rest of the group gets back. So it's a valuable experience for the students who are going on the trip and we try to make it a valuable experience for the students that stay back, but you're splitting up the grade right in the middle of key instructional times and so that's, that's an issue. Why look at it this year? Because if you think of two-thirds of the students on average have gone on that trip that have had an interest in going, two-thirds of three hundred and forty-seven makes it impossible to host in one event. So we would be looking at limiting participation through something like a lottery or it'd be first come, first served, which we've already seen is difficult to hold the parents back on that. It creates a lot of stress and tension. Or you'd be looking at multiple trips and that could be up to as many as five days of instruction that's, that would be altered in some way. In the past, there's been a, there was a history of trying to have the seventh grade teachers chaperone and be out with the students. And over time, through all the things that go on in people's busy schedules, last year we were down to three of the seventh grade teachers that went with, so that means sixth grade teachers, eighth grade teachers, specialists are going with the chaperone on the trips and that's impacting the instruction school-wide because those teachers are no longer there. So they have substitutes. When they use the personal days they've earned later in the spring, they have substitutes. So all the things that we report to you in the annual report that, you know, expect performance on, we're, we're asking to do it with, with less time. And that's a trade-off and that's what we're looking at right now, is the trade-off worth it? The trip is definitely valuable and the trip is definitely positive and Eagle Bluff is an excellent place and they've been nothing but great in hosting it, but we believe that in the time that it's been hosted by the middle school, this is probably the time that's the best opportunity to take a look at, do we continue it in that same fashion or not? Because we will have to make decisions we haven't had to make before about who gets to go on the trip. Does that answer the question that, John?
Julie?
My question is, sort of relates to the current seventh grade science and social studies curriculum and how closely the ELC trip really aligns with what your sort of essential learnings for seventh grade science and social studies.
The Eagle Bluff has identified state standards that they cover with the curriculum there and so we know that it's not only quality curriculum, but it's actually in alignment with the state standards. And obviously what's trying to be accomplished back at school while, while those students are gone, is trying to accomplish some of those same standards, but in a, in a different setting. So in no way are we trying to give it a connotation that it's bad instruction or that the kids don't cover the same material, they cover it in different ways and that's kind of what the dilemma is, is do we continue to cover these things in different ways or is there some way to bring it more unifying if we're going to miss instructional days? Or what we're recommending is can we make it complement our regular instruction and not have it be a choice between one or the other?
And then my follow, second question, what is the total number of teachers that go on the trip? And then you said there were three seventh grade teachers that went?
Looking back at the past years, I've run the rosters of everybody who's gone, there's been up to thirteen teachers that have gone on the trip and I think that's the ideal that they look for and several years has been as few as ten that they could find who were willing to go because recognize if a teacher's going on the trip, they're just not reporting to work anymore. They're leaving their family and whatever else behind for two and a half to three days of, of actual time and so they're not always available to go for other reasons. So like I said, there's, there's been, the ideal is to have thirteen and there's been as few as ten a few times. And when they have less faculty available to go, they try to increase the role that the chaperones play in, in, in leading the activities there. One of the strengths, we believe, of finding alternate times to do this is obviously only middle school teachers can go at this time because the middle school's got this compromised instruction going on. If it were times that were not school days... If it were times that were not school days, you could have high school, elementary staff, you could have staff from Arcadia, you could have other licensed teachers in the district who, you know, have those skills that we want, but they aren't currently working, maybe they're on leave, maybe they're a stay-at-home parent or whatever. So you also need to expand the opportunity for people who want to go in and participate in that experience rather than twisting arms to get people to go. And I, and when I say twisting arms, I don't think because people see it as a negative experience. It's three days out of their life that sometimes they just can't make that happen.
No?
Have you anticipated the, was a change in schedule, what it might do for participation in students?
Want to talk about registration?
I, I think we're, I mean, that could potent, I mean, if you, if we're looking at potentially moving it either to August or sometime during a break during the school year, that may decrease the participation, which when we have as large of a class size as we have coming in, that might help alleviate some of the problems that we are looking at in that we, we won't be able to accommodate everybody right now. And you, you are correct, some may be on family vacations or be out of town to the week, and so it will not work for them. The one thing we have considered is do we need to look at offering different times for, you know, two different trips throughout the year? And I think part of it will depend on how attendance shakes out with, if we look at doing this during a different schedule. But that would potentially be a toss-up if we do move it out of kind of core instruction time that there, there, we are probably looking at some that would not be able to attend due to other family commitments.
No, the only data that we can look back at and have some confidence in is that every year, about two-thirds of the students choose to go in this end of October, early November timeframe. That's been very consistent. So we're applying that, we're extrapolating that out to next year's group. We don't know what would happen if we changed it because it, it hasn't happened this decade. So, so we don't know for sure. We're trying to look at some possibilities for what if it does cause conflicts in family travel schedules, things like that, or it's not as much fun because you're not getting out of school to go. We looked at setting a window developmentally such as 12 to 14 where it's no longer grade dependent. You might want to set a window where two years of, of the middle school age range would be eligible for it so that students, if they had missed because they had a wedding or a family event or something, they could try it again for the next year. Or if we had multiple trips, if we had an August and a May trip or an August and a June trip or whatever the case may be, they had two different opportunities to go. And also if students really like it, they could repeat the experience because it's certainly a different place, different experience every time, especially if you go during a different season, you get a whole different range of activities along with the core activities that students like to do.
No, get another one?
Are there other schools that are doing it during the time you're proposing and what has been their results?
Well, most of the Environmental Learning Centers book fairly early and they book the prime times that, that schools are looking for. And so there are schools that go at all different times of the year and there are schools that do go a different, different outside of school times. Personally, I've chaperoned these trips during the summer. I've got on school days in, in multiple districts and multiple settings. And all the ELCs that I've worked with are outstanding. All the times of the year work well, in-school, outside of school, they all work well. It's, I think it becomes a matter of finding out what this school district would like to do. And we could certainly, we have Amy Allen has been very helpful and other people have been very helpful in coming together all the possible combinations that are sitting out there right now. We didn't want to give you so much information about these specifics because it kind of leaves you swimming for something to hold on to. But if we're, we're asked to narrow something down or to steer something in a, in a specific direction, we can be very detailed with questions just like that.
No?
My question, more specifically, open to get a little bit more of a clue of participation from other schools that are doing it during the summer.
And I think based on the spaces that are available, they've had great success filling the spaces that they have available. They don't always try to reserve an entire facility. Sometimes like the summer programs will just try to arrange 100 spaces out of a facility that holds 250 or 300 or whatever. They design it to be a smaller trip because they know they're not going to get every student. There's other things going on. One of the ways to try to ensure the greatest opportunity is to find those real dead zones, if you will, in programming that the district provides. We know for a fact by mid-August at the middle school, we can't keep students away from the building. Most days we don't have anything for them, but they keep showing up anyway because PLUS programming has ended, the recreational programs, the teams, the tournaments and all that are on a break waiting for school to start. And there's a window of time there. So, so we have specific examples of just about every combination that you could think of for running this, but it's a long list. And so, you know, we can present that, we can, we wanted to limit how much information we gave to, you know, we already gave you a lot of information, wanted to make sure that we didn't give you too much. But any follow-up question, we'd be happy to give the, give the details that go with it.
I have one.
Okay.
The students that don't participate that stay back at the school district versus those that have the opportunity and take the opportunity to participate? What is a subsequent measure of the educational value of the trip versus what was their educational experience when they stayed at the school?
Well, what the, the staff is trying to do is because they're reassembled in a different configuration than they are in a normal instructional day, as they'll do things at our alternate forms of the same standards that they're covering at Eagle Bluff, sort of environmental science type things. They're taking advantage of the extra time that they have with students to, to work with them in a different way. Looking at the statistics, I ran at a question ahead of time about, so last year, 109 students from out of 271 did not go on the trip. 22 of those students missed time during the three days that students, that the other students were gone. So 22 of the 109 missed time. And the reasons varied from illness to hunting to no reason to appointments. So people are seeing it as a good time to do other things because the rest of the kids are gone. So it is, you know, it's one of those things where you balance how good the trip is to what are, what are the byproducts that, that come along with it? And that doesn't lessen the value of the trip at all to, to look at that, I think. But it is, it is a decision-making thing. And we're, we're recommending something that we've thought really through from both perspectives. So we aren't recommending because we have a favorite or we are advocating for something. We just believe that it's important to take a look at this because the, the number one concern, I think that most people are going to have when they look at this issue is the final thing that was presented there, it's different than it had been. And, and, and for some people, that's, that's their major concern. It's different. It's different than what they're accustomed to. And we're not doing it, we're not recommending this just to be different. We believe that there's a way to get the value of the trip to as many students as possible, even more students than were possible before, and still not sacrifice those instructional periods that we, that we need.
Board members?
I don't want to cut our questions off, but we're nearing the 10 o'clock, so I need to ask for a motion that we continue the meeting past 10 o'clock.
So moved.
By Julie, seconded by Carrie, any discussion? All those in favor of continuing our meeting past 10 o'clock, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No? Motion carries, all right.
Erin and I didn't board on that. We don't have the power to do that.
Other questions for Jeff and Erin?
So, so there is not a currently an ELC that could accommodate the lion's share of us, the, the subsequent classes coming through in any three-day kind of trip? Is that, is that correct?
What we did for, actually Amy Allen ran an inventory of all the ELCs in the state and lending it to the state, which in some cases is a four to six-hour drive depending on how far you want to go to an ELC, but in the state, at what's available, what's not booked for next year. And there are no places that could handle more than 200 students for next year. But that's because they're pre-booked. So you'd have to be looking at, well, is there a place that can handle 300 or 350? That's a separate question that we could look into. But right now, there weren't vacancies for that many because, you know, with the dorm style setting, sometimes certain buildings or certain blocks are blocked out. And we, you know, just for informational purposes, we reserved our spot for next year in the same timeframe and it's still being held for us. But that's what most places do, they book one year ahead of time. We asked them to hold it beyond when we normally book in November so that we could consider this. It's still there, we haven't gone away from it. Other places book at least a year ahead of time too. So there is no place one year out that could handle it. We've come back and look at what is, you know, if you get more than a year out, is there a place that has the maximum to handle? We would probably want to have a handle on how many people are we talking about? Because it, you said 347. And we know we're not going to have every student. There's a lot of reasons why every student wouldn't want to participate. Developmentally, not every student wants to be away from home for three days. Not every parent is comfortable sending. So we'll never have 100%, even if we try to make that available. What ideally, what we're hoping for is that every student who wishes to go and whose family wishes them to go gets a chance and that we can even expand it to every Northfield resident or, or middle school student, regardless of how they are enrolled at the middle school, all get the same chance to do that. And that's, that's a balancing act that we can't totally predict. So that's why we looked at all these options.
I, I have a couple of questions of it. Sorry. So one of the things you were talking about is the students that stay back, that some of the, trying to meet those state standards in that other way. You characterized it as treading water, but then later you said it was because you pulling different teachers that would not, if you didn't have them going to Eagle Bluff, you would have to meet the state standards in the classroom. So I was wondering is to, I'm assuming that there's some ways of doing that that are different than what's happening right now for the students that don't go or? I mean, I guess what I'm looking at is you have a quality learning experience that are meeting the state standards within the instructional day. You still have to meet those state standards within the instructional day, but you won't have that programming to do it because that would not be considered part of the school day.
It's hard to really make this brief, but I'm going to try. So we're talking basically about the disruption and distinction between the trip and what happens staying back. For example, two of the most consistent chaperones have been the two seventh grade science teachers. So if they're on the trip, there's no way the kids who are staying back are getting the same experience. They're having a substitute teacher who will come in and try to do the curriculum that they left behind. Doesn't mean it's, they're poor lessons or that they're not well-planned. It's, it's just going to be different. Also becomes so disruptive to have, it's kind of like if the flu bug went through and knocked out 20% of our staff. Our instructional day is not going to look the same because it's going to be impacts all across the board.
What I was thinking about more is if you went with this proposed approach, then you would have, you would no longer have the ELC delivering the state standards that would have to be done as part of the seventh grade science curriculum, right? So...
I think, yeah, some of the standards are being, are repetitive.
Okay.
Just because they're covering standards doesn't mean that we're not covering them in the classroom as well. I really see it being, you know, the extra scoop of environmental science and, and all the things that, you know, communication skills and teamwork and all those things that come along, it's not just the seventh grade life science curriculum. I see it being extra, an enrichment opportunity for kids. And that's why it's so challenging to, to consider limiting some students from being able to go, but also ensuring that whatever you're getting out there will recreate it back here. It just, it becomes quite a challenge to, to do that.
And the other question is more of an observation. I was a little concerned with the, the second page of the memo, mainly from a perception standpoint, that it lists four pros and 15 cons on the current program. And so the two perceptions at a glance you'd say is, one, is this a balanced assessment? Or two, why have we been doing it for a decade if there's so many cons?
And I think what we tried to do, and Erin commented they want, is we just, that's where we wanted to start, is let's just come up with a list of what can we have on each side. And we're not looking at it as each one being significantly or, or being equal to each other. For example, and we're talking about change, that's a huge con. And how do you measure that compared to some of the other things? Some of the other cons on here about the costs associated with it are, is very trivial because they're not big costs. We're just pointing out, you know, that's an accounting kind of thing to say, here are what the costs are, but we don't see those costs as a negative. In fact, virtually the same costs in one way or another would be taking place in a community services model. They just would, they would look a little bit differently or they'd be organized differently. So it's really intention, or initially, Dr. Richardson knows that this was an internal memo just to get the thinking process going. And he said, you know, well, now it's time to, to share this with the board. So can you clean that up so it's fit for public consumption? But we didn't go back and redo it and it's, and it's not intended to look like there's any bias there. It's just, it's a list of things is really what it is. And you can't measure them equally in, in any way, shape or form. The biggest thing on the pros is it's a quality facility, it offers a quality program and a quality experience. You know, if you're going to weigh things, that, that outweighs just about everything else. But, you know, it, when you start actually balancing it, how does it fit in? When they, when they placed this program in the middle school, I was not here, I know the board members that were around at that time were heavily involved in that. It was a different era, it was a different environment, different expectations. For better or worse, things have changed.
Of having been through this when we went through the last iteration, I know that there's strong feelings within the community. And I think those feelings are very likely to be there again as we look at the possibilities of making adjustments. But I think, I think there are really kind of three key pieces. I think that, you know, the first key piece is there is the reality this year that with 322, Jeff?
This year's enrollment for seventh grade was 271. Next year is 340. As right as we stand today.
As we speak, it's 347. Maintain the program as it has been for the last decade, we're going to turn away 100, at least 100 students. And we will have to create a lottery strategy to do that if we maintain the program just as it is right now. So I think that's one reason that I think we felt we needed to get this to be 50, 60, you said 100 and how many didn't go this last year?
Oh, 109 did not go.
109 chose not to go.
Everybody who registered on time was able to go.
Right. But with 109 who didn't go, now, now we have basically fractured instruction or instruction that, that may be less in quality because subs have to take it over or we have to reconfigure classrooms to make it happen. I think that's problematic. I think the third piece that's problematic is, as Jeff has indicated, when, when this, the decision to make this trip at, at Eagle Bluff and move it to the middle school was first implemented, we had significantly more seventh grade staff that said, I'm on board with this, I'm willing to go do this. I don't know, Jeff, as you've done your homework going back, my sense is when, when Mick was, was coordinating this thing, how many of the middle school seventh grade teachers were involved?
It was, it was more. I have that list, I didn't bring that list with me tonight, but it started out as being a very team-building thing.
My guess is that, that the majority of teachers at that point were seventh grade teachers. This year, we're down to three seventh grade teachers that went. And then we had other teachers, but now we have teachers that are coming out of...
Everywhere in the building.
Sixth grade, eighth grade, high school, elementary building?
No, just everywhere in our building.
Everywhere in your building. So, so now you're not only beginning to impact all of, of your seventh grade students, but you're also impacting with the fact that you're bringing subs in, in eighth grade and sixth grade in, in higher numbers. And again, the quality of instruction there. If, as I've told teachers before, when they ask to, to do leaves of various kinds, if I could have the same quality instruction when I bring a sub in as when I bring you in, why would I need to have you there? Teachers understand very clearly, there's a different instruction that goes on when they're with their own class. And I understand tonight, you know, we had, we had a list of teachers that were identified who, who... identified who, who were supporting, maintaining the program and doing what it is, but out of that group, it's a fair, it's a fairly small group of those folks that actually go on the trip. And so, you know, I, I think, I think part of the, you know, that's a part of the issue that we have to, to come back and frame. So I, I think as we kind of look at it, it's, we're going to need to deal with the fact that we need to have a different strategy. To begin with, either we're going to have to have a strategy that says we can anticipate that we have to have a lottery and that we will reduce that to a, to a, say, uh, two hundred and, uh, plus kids and all the other kids will stay home. You are, you're looking at not having the staff right now that's ready, that are ready in the seventh grade to do this. And so the other staff that are coming, good people, positive experience for the kids that go, but we know that negatively impacts the kids in their classes who now have a sub instead of a teacher for three or more days. And the other alternative as I see it is we have to go to a strategy that says we're going to offer two trips. And now we're not, we're, we're not cutting three days out of the, uh, the regular curriculum to provide a quality enrichment program. We're, we're now creating five or six days that's there. So none, none of these are easy decisions and, you know, and I appreciate, you know, what Aaron and Jeff have done. We needed to get it out on the table for people to think about. Um, you know, very purposefully, we've said to Eagle Bluff, we need the time to figure out what we're doing and the time for the information that we're sharing here to permeate, permeate in the community so you can hear about it from parents. But I think the reality is we're in a position, we could go back on, in January, when we have a board meeting, you could say as a board, no, we want to maintain the trip just as it is. We know that we're going to have less, uh, kids that are going to be eligible to go because there'll have to be a lottery. We've already got the trip dates assigned. Everything's good to go. That's, that still doesn't mean that we will have eleven, ten to thirteen seventh grade teachers ready to plug in and do that because we haven't had seven to thirteen, or ten to thirteen seventh grade teachers for a long time. So at that point then, there's diminishing positive returns every time you pull a teacher who's not teaching seventh graders out. And it isn't a negative to the kids that go on the trip, but it has the potential of being negative to the kids that stay behind that get a sub for three days or five days or six days instead. Um, and if we go beyond, if, if we, if we go to the position of saying we've got to address giving every kid an opportunity to go, then we need to go back to Eagle Bluff and we just say, need to say, when can you find us? Another three days. When, when can that be scheduled? We double our transportation costs and, uh, we may not necessarily get a significant additional number of students if the last few years has been indication where there's a fairly significant number of students that for whatever reason, the family choice or the student choice is, I choose not to go. So those are kind of the things that are sitting there. I, I think, have I put all the elephants out in the room? Are they charging and stampeding through the, through the building at this point? But, you know, we, we're in a position to be ready to maintain everything as is, to make everything the way it is. But we think before we make that choice, you need to understand what that choice means. And we need to hear from you, are you prepared to make those choices? Because this is one, as I told Jeff and Aaron, we can't decide this on our own. This is one that the board is going to have to weigh in on. The same way you had to weigh in on it when you made a choice to move away from Wolf Ridge and move to Eagle Bluff. The same choice you had to make when you said, we're going to not do this at the fifth grade level, we're going to do it at the seventh grade level. Because this is going to be a change. And even if we keep it as is, it will be a change. Okay? So that just, I just wanted to make sure those thoughts are kind of out on the table for people to think about. And again, the, the purpose of bringing this up tonight is now you have an entire month to chew on this. And, you know, we'll be prepared to come back in January, uh, again to review the, um, option. And also if there are pieces that you want to ask or have additional material or information on or other options you want us to pursue, pursue so that we can lay those out for you so you can have those in place to look at, it gives us a month to put those pieces together before we go forward. What we also know right now is, and I think Eagle Bluff is being very generous with us in terms of giving us until January fifteenth to make a decision. And so I don't want to, I don't want to, uh, encroach on their, their generosity beyond the fifteenth of January. I think at that point, we need to make a decision one way or the other. Okay?
Well, looking at the bright side, if there is one, um, whether community services is involved or not, um, and whatever is decided as an organization, we're going to make it the best trip possible. And it will be a positive trip. It always has been. This is just one of those decision-making boxes that we end up getting put into and we'd rather get that information out now than have people contact you in another time of the year, August or September, whatever, and say, what, what's going on here? Why are kids being limited? And that's, that's what this presentation is about, is looking at the other options.
No?
My understanding is that we still are, through the fifteenth of January, uh, Eagle Bluff has, has a reserved, has reserved space for us.
Correct.
Right. And the maximum, with the maximum number of spaces they can provide.
My question is, if we choose to go the alternative, does Eagle Bluff have space scheduled for us at another time, perhaps during the summer, spring or earlier?
They don't have, they have two hundred spaces available, um, at the time that we typically have reserved for in the past. They have other smaller size amounts available at different times of the year.
There are some chunks that.
Yeah, other chunks at different sizes. So we could do a multiple trip at two different times if we like the space at the times they have available, as do the other ELCs in the state, have chunks of time for different amounts depending on what their booking is at this point.
So we won't have to, uh, not have the program for a year while we wait for a space?
There, yeah, there are different combinations to, to continue, continue on with, um, the maximum of two hundred students going.
Right.
Or other combinations or mo- or additional trips.
Right.
Um, we would not be able to do back-to-back trips at Eagle Bluff right now, but in future year, um, we can try to book that.
Lee?
Um, we touched on the, the curriculum enhancement that ELC provides for science and, um, social studies, but one of the things it does as well is the, the team building sort of piece of it. And having gone on Eagle Bluff myself as a chaperone, one of the, the most popular elements of that entire three days is the ropes course. As part of the options, were, was a day trip considered as an option with the seventh graders doing just the ropes course as sort of a, you know, enhanced field trip, i.e. team building type of activity?
That's not something that we researched further, but we have the available times and I'm sure that, uh, Eagle Bluff or any place else, and there are, um, if you think about ropes courses, there are ropes courses in the metro area that are a lot closer that are just the ropes course. You know, they're not a residential place, they're not the whole package. Um, so that, that type of trip would actually be expanded into a lot of other opportunities within the market, um, that could be considered. Anybody who has a opening will consider us as a, as a suitable, um, booking, you know, so we could research that if we're directed in that path.
Okay.
We've been looking at strictly the overnight programs.
No, I understand that. I'm just thinking because I know that's a really popular piece and it does speak to the sort of team building that, that, that particular experience.
Yeah, and you would have a course similar to, um, the Eagle Bluff course as close as Lakeville, South Center Lakeville, I mean, you know, Camp Street Fund. So there are, um, that type of trip also expands to not, not having to have a coach bus take you away for the whole day or two days, whatever the case may be.
Okay, good. Any other questions? So it sounds like what, um, board members need to do is if there is additional information they would need in order to, to be able to make that decision, they would like.
Is, please share that with me in the next week or so, so that I can share it with Aaron and Jeff so that they can basically generate the information that you need from them. Because I, I, I guess what I want to make really clear going forward is we have not eliminated any options right now. But we do need to, to help you understand that there are some things that are, are changing now in terms of the way this is playing out. And some of them have been evolutionary changes in terms of the reduction of, of the number of seventh grade teachers that have been able to volunteer. And again, I, I think Jeff has been really clear about that. This is not about, you know, uh, we, we don't want to support the kids or whatever, but those people also have lives. And when you talk about three days away from home, the ability of, of staff to always do that isn't really always there. Um, so what, what, what we know will be the, the things, if we leave everything exactly the same, two things are going to happen. We know that we're going to continue to be drawing staff from outside the seventh grade to, to fulfill the roles and subs will be hired from outside. And the second piece we know is that if we're going to maintain as we are, there will be a lottery system in place. And there will be a group of kids that won't get to go, probably above and beyond kids who would choose not to go anyway. I think that's, is that, that's kind of the bottom line piece.
If numbers.
And, and the only way to avoid that is, is to increase the number of days, um, that we have available to do multiple trips, which then increases the number of sub days, increases the number of ti- days that staff are away from the building and increases the number of days when students are not, uh, operating in their regular curriculum, either as students who go on the trip or students who stay home or students who are in other grade levels where they now have a sub for three days or six days instead of their regular teaching.
If you extrapolate the data, since the trip has been at the middle school with the, with the enrollment of that group, you're looking at turning away about fifty kids who would normally have an interest in going and they wouldn't be in the lottery or wouldn't be the first ones in, whatever the case may be.
Excellent presentation and excellent discussion.
All right. Members, we are now going on to the fifth item.
Oh, boy. All right. And, and, and let's see if we can do this re- really succinctly. Um, the other piece that, that I really believe that the, uh, I want to share with the board at this time because we're continuing to at least ruminate on and have some initial thoughts about what should our school calendar look like for two thousand thirteen, fourteen and beyond. And, uh, in, in doing that, we've done some brainstorming. Uh, we have actually, um, talked to, to our meet and confer committee to some extent on this over a couple of different years. And what I just want the board to be aware of is that at the present time, we're at least doing some initial thought in terms of an application for what we would call a, a more balanced calendar. And the concept of a more balanced calendar would be that we would try to do a better job aligning instructional periods, reducing the number of shortened weeks or holiday interruptions and increasing the number of instructional days prior to high-stakes assessments. So really trying to get three basic things to happen. We know if we look at doing this kind of a balanced calendar, however, this requires an application to the Department of Education. It requires us to do at least three public hearings where we would share the elements of the calendar as well as actual examples of what a calendar might look like. And we have to, would have to get from the state of Minnesota through the commissioner's office, formal state approval of a ba- a more balanced calendar. So what are the elements of a, of a more balanced calendar? Well, the, we know that in the past, we've had concerns expressed whenever we talk about doing something different in the calendar. So here's some things that it, that don't change. We don't change the number of student contact days. We'd still be looking at a hundred and seventy-four student contact days. So it does not expand the number of days of school. There still are the same number of days of vacation. What it does do, however, is it looks at moving the start of school prior to Labor Day and really aligning that school start with fall athletic practices that begin in mid-August and also when the Minskew School System begins school, which is also mid-August. So the, the idea being that instead of having kids coming back and being in practice for two or three weeks before school starts, practice and school would start at the same time. Because you stay with a hundred and seventy-four days, that would mean that school would be out before Memorial Day. And so that changes that timing. It would maximize instructional days prior to the administration of any of the high-stakes testing in terms of MCA threes, which right now are scheduled to be done, uh, in late April. And so by, uh, doing this, you end up with more days of instruction prior to, to that testing occurring. You would also maximize the number of instructional days completed prior to advanced placement testing, which almost all of it is in early May. You would also look at, uh, working with continuity of, as far as reducing shortened weeks. Right now, we have a shortened week for MEA. That would, that potentially would disappear because you would actually create one of the balanced breaks or vacation times during that week. Um, and so you would really look at a, a more balanced system where you would have a, a break in the fall, a break in the winter, a break in the spring. Um, it would really also look at trying to get staff development days lined up, uh, again so that they could be more effectively tied to one end or the other of a break. And we would, will be looking at providing two days of pre-service for new staff because we're not really giving them the kind of, of training opportunities they need to begin and get started. So we'd be aligning the, the quarters and semesters with the end of the first quarter being tied to Education Minnesota Conference. So that would be a full week. The end of the second quarter would be winter break, it would be two full weeks. The third quarter would be spring break and it would be aligned in most cases with Olaf and Carlton's break times. We would still strive for balanced length of semesters. We'd still have time at the end of each quarter for, uh, teacher work time and staff development. The other piece, however, by doing the break at, in terms of the end of the semester and winter break, we now have, before they go on winter break, we finish the first semester. And so we don't have kids as they are right now where they leave for winter break and then come back and have two or three weeks of school afterwards, typically after which they've had to kind of gear back up to learn again and they have to, have to be reminded of the work that they've done before break and then they turn right around and go into testing. So, so semester tests would be done before they went on, on winter break. We see that as a, a huge advantage for secondary students. We also think that by doing this, we could allow the district to be more aware of retirement and vacancies because the calendar starts earlier, we could ask people to tell us earlier, am I thinking about retiring or am I thinking about leaving the system? The other thing that we would look at with this, and again tied to the fact that if we do this, we have to get approved. do this, we have to get approval by the Department of Ed, is we would probably look at trying to do not two years, but probably three years of calendar at once, because that's the maximum amount of time you can do a balanced changed calendar that starts before Labor Day. So we could actually create a calendar for 2013, 14, 2014, 15, 2015, 16. And then the piece that we wouldn't change is we would continue to do PLCs as we currently have. They've been extremely successful. We wouldn't see changing those a bit. So kinda the key pieces to remember are no change in the total number of days, a change in when we start and when we end, getting more days in place before high-stakes testing, getting more days in place before advanced placement, having our start date aligned with the start of practice, and also the start of Minskew in terms of, of the Minskew Schools. And basically having the, the ends of quarters and semesters attached very clearly to other natural breaks that are gonna occur, whether it's winter break, whether it's MEA weekend, whether it's, uh, spring break. And still having a balanced calendar in semesters, and still having the normal quarter, uh, work days and so on for teachers, but expanding the amount of pre-service for new teachers. So that's really what we're talking about doing. At this time, I am waiting for the Department of Ed to actually issue the new application for 2013, 14. And I've been on the phone kind of every week to the department saying, you know, "We need to make a decision, and if we're going to make a decision, it needs to be by February." And if we're going to do that, that means we need to be able to present calendar options to the community in January. So as soon as I get a copy of an application, we will be working on getting that completed. They're assuring me it's going to be much more streamlined. They also are basically telling me that, um, as long as we're not looking at going to a four-day week, that neither the Commissioner nor the Governor is necessarily opposed to looking at a more balanced calendar. So, um, I think this has the potential to move forward. Again, just like the discussion we just had for the previous 45 minutes, this is a change. We think there's some very positive things that come with this change, but it's something that I want you as a board to have some time to think about, and some time for the community to react to. But what I also don't want people to react is in the format of saying, "Well, you know, I'm losing summer break," or, you know, "This is a year-round calendar." It is not either of those. And, but it is a calendar that I think we, we feel provides better balance for kids, and instructional strategies that will maximize the amount of time that kids have in instruction before they have assessments that are high stakes. And whether it's state imposed, or whether it's getting ready for cottage testing, getting ready for spring ACT, getting ready for AP exams. Any questions I can answer for you at this point? The idea would be if, if this is something that the, the board is, doesn't say to me tonight, "Stop it, Dr. Richardson, don't do this, don't even think about talking about this." My intention will be to work and move forward with the, with drafting the application and bringing that application back to you for consideration in January. And again, with the target of, if we move forward after the public hearings and we hear what the community has to say, we'd be coming back in our normal timeframe in February to approve calendar for the coming year, and hopefully for multiple years in the future.
Julie?
With the crossover in timing on public hearings here, and then with the iPad initiative, do you see those happening simultaneously?
No.
Or would they be separate meetings?
No, they will be absolutely separate. I don't want any, I don't want any overlap between these. It's, number one, it's too confusing. Number one, I don't, I don't want to see, if somebody's got concerns about the calendar, I don't want them, uh, that impacting their, their thorough and complete review and thought about the Transformational Technology Initiative. I, I don't want that Transformational Technology Initiative either getting in the way of somebody who is really anxious to see a different calendar and doesn't wanna do technology. But there aren't any of those people, are there, Matt? Very, very, very few. So no, my, my sense would be we would have separate hearings for each piece.
Okay.
So that people would have an opportunity to come to one or both, but also trying to get the hearings to be reasonable length and time, as opposed to where we are right now.
Is there, is there really adequate time to get in, get state approval and three public hearings in, and give people notice that their, the summer vacations are likely to be two weeks shorter than they have been in the past? Is that...
Well, I think it is possible as we roll forward right now. Now, the, the piece I can't, I can't speak for, John, is I can't speak for the Commissioner. You know, I'm being told by the people that report to her, "If you get, if you get this to us in January, the Commissioner can turn it around for you and get it done." But, but I, you know, I, I, I have no way to force her in terms of moving through that process.
I understand that, and that's part of the basis of the question, but I, I also think that, I, I mean, I guess, do, are we required to have three hearings after state approval, or three hearings?
No, it's three hearings before state approval.
Before state approval.
So, so the idea would be, as soon as I have an application form I can use, my intention is to get that application done, draft the calendars, and basically go out in January and, and share the information. Actually, before, we would turn the application in, because actually the department wants the minutes of the, of the meetings to be included in the application packet, including how many people came, what, you know, what people said, et cetera. So, yeah, I, I think that, that, that's all doable. I guess the worst-case scenario I could see is we do everything and the department, for whatever reason, can't get their act together and get it approved. And I would, I would say to the, to the department, then back us up a year, approve it, and let us do it the year following, rather than make us come back and jump through all the hoops again.
Okay.
Okay?
So we're waiting on the application.
So we're waiting on the applica- at this point, we're waiting on the application, because we, you know, I looked at what they had previously, and was told, "You really shouldn't start to do that application, because we're gonna try to really streamline it." And there are lots of things that don't make sense. There's a bunch of pieces in the application where you have to go out and do all the mathematical calculations to prove you have the same number of hours of instruction. But if I'm gonna have, if I have 174 days this year, and 174 days in the new calendar, why do I have to prove to somebody that 174 equals 174? I mean...
Wouldn't be hard.
I'm thinking it would be fairly easy to do, but, you know, the, the, there was a whole page of documentation that you had to do to prove it's there, and it's mainly because the calendar, the application is created to handle 40 weeks, to handle year-round schools, to handle all sorts of other options. Ashley, this is a more balanced calendar. That's the name. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Any other questions I can answer for you?
No.
What's the penalty if we ignore the Department of Education?
Um, they'd not send you your state aid.
Well?
Well...
I understand that one.
Stephanie?
Hi.
If we didn't get our state aid, would, would be problematic. That's about, that's about 75% of our budget comes from state aid. So no, you would not want to do something where the department would say, "Stop it, or we won't pay you." Especially now that they're going to actually pay us on a more regular basis.
Trying to get the measure here.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay.
We are ready to move on to our next set of items. The first item for individual action, which is to certify the final 2012 payable 2013 tax levy.
Basically, you have a recommendation, you have Stephanie's report, so...
Moved by Carrie. Sorry. Was there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Noel, so we have a motion on the table and a second, um, to certify the county auditor, the 2012 payable 2013 final certified net tax levy in the amount of $50,357,473.42. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Oh, okay, Carrie?
Stephanie, the, um, in the PowerPoint?
Yes.
The, the, the big box there says, um, $50,356,900. Good question. I, I believe that is the preliminary certification, which then, as everything got calculated at the county, once they got our certification, it was updated. And I do believe, I can confirm this, I, I will, but I believe that it is the, what is on your board...
What's in the motion? The superintendent's recommendation.
Yeah, $50,357 is the...
I apologize.
Most accurate number.
Okay.
Okay, so that's what I'm moving, is the one in the superintendent's recommendation.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our second item for individual action is the motion to approve the revised 2012, 2013 general fund budget as presented.
And again, again, you heard a very thorough report, so the recommendation of approval, that's all I have to add.
Was there a motion by Julie?
Yes, so...
Okay. Seconded by Jeff. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our third item for individual action is insurance revenue service post issuance compliance procedure, and this is to comply with the newly adopted IRS regulations. Anything you wanna add on that?
Do you wanna add anything to that, Stephanie?
Um, this is related to the bond issuances of the refundings we recently had, and just finalizing all of that paperwork, this is a new requirement by the IRS that we, requesting we formalize the procedures that we will follow all that is required of us for arbitrage calculations and record retention.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the post issuance compliance procedures as presented?
A moved.
Moved by Noel.
Second.
Seconded by John. Any other questions or discussion? No? All those in favor of approving the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are ready for the items for the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping and note there were a couple additional, um, items in your table file, personal items? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping?
So moved.
Moved by Julie.
Second.
Seconded by Carrie. All those in favor of approving the consent groupings, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items of information, you have in your packet the enrollment report from December of 2012?
Correct. And really nothing significant report in terms of change or difference.
Okay. All right, future meetings, we have in January our back-to-back, on January 14th, the organizational school board meeting.